The Royal Commission is now in session.
Good morning. We commence with an acknowledgement of country. We wish to acknowledge the Ghanar people of the Adelaide Plains, the traditional custodians of the land on which the Royal Commission is meeting this week, and to pay our respects to the elders past, present and emerging. We also acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Eora nation, upon whose lands I am participating in this hearing, and the Wurundjeri people of the Kulin nation, from whose lands Ms Bennet of Council is appearing. We pay our respects to their elders past, present and emerging. We also pay our respects to all First Nations people attending the hearing in person today, as well as those who are viewing the hearing on the live stream. Yes, Ms Eastman?
Thank you Chair and good morning Commissioners and to everyone following the broadcast and the proceedings in the hearing room in Adelaide. Our first witness is Karen Rogers and you'll see that she's here in the witness box with her son Daniel by her side. You'll see a photo of him and she's our first witness today.
Ms Rogers, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission in Adelaide to give your evidence. We very much appreciate your attendance. Would you be good enough to listen, follow the associate who will administer the oath to you? Thank you very much.
I will read you the oath. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by Almighty God that the evidence which you shall give will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much, Ms Rogers. Now, Ms Eastman will ask you some questions. Just to make sure you're aware, of course, two Commissioners are in the same room as you are in Adelaide, that is Commissioner McKeown and Commissioner Bennet. And I am remote from Sydney, so I'm in Sydney. Ms Eastman will now ask you some questions.
Thank you. Ms Rogers, you've prepared a statement for the Royal Commission?
Yes, that's correct.
And you've got a copy with you?
Yes.
And your name is Karen Rogers?
Yes, that's correct.
You've provided your address to the Royal Commission?
I have.
And you work as, in the disability sector as an advocate, is that right?
Well, I did until November last year and now I'm at home.
You've prepared the statement and you've read it before coming today?
Yes, I have.
And is it true?
It's true.
Now, you've decided that what you'd like to do today is to read your statement and at different points we're going to stop and pause and we either have some photographs or videos that you want to share with the Royal Commission and I'll ask you some questions as we go along. So are you happy with that approach?
Yes, that's good.
All right. So can I invite you to start reading your statement and perhaps we can start at paragraph three?
Sure. My name's Karen Lee Rogers. I'm 60 years old and I live in Adelaide with my husband Graham and my son Daniel. I retired in November 2020 after 25 years in a career in the disability sector. Immediately before I retired, I worked as a project leader on the Our Voice SA programme, a peer advocacy programme for people with intellectual disability or learning disability auspiced by Julie Far Purple Orange and funded by the National Disability Insurance Agency, the NDAI. In this role, I was responsible for supporting the peer advocacy group at meetings as well as liaising with South Australian politicians, senior bureaucrats and people within the South Australian Department of Human Services. Prior to working at Our Voice SA, I worked as an accommodation manager at Cara from August 2014 to August 2018. I also worked as an advocate for 10 years prior to my time at Cara in a number of organisations, including Autism SA and Parent Advocacy. I continue to do voluntary work in the disability sector as a member of the board of Home Place, an organisation that provides accommodation and lifestyle support to people with disability in South Australia and as a community visitor with the South Australian Community Visitors Scheme. I started my training with the Community Visitors Scheme in February 2019 and began visits in June 2019. My son Daniel is my second child. Daniel was born on the 8th of November 1980. There are several photographs that you will see of Daniel further on. Daniel is beautiful. He's a lovely man who is very gentle and very sweet. Daniel's favourite things are sticks, Christmas carols and Abba. Since he was young, his favourite hobby has been collecting sticks and twigs. He breaks them into small pieces and collects them in containers and buckets. We have several buckets of sticks at our house. Since moving home, Daniel has learned how to make artwork with these sticks. And he's learned how to make... We've bought birdhouses and coasters and bowls and he's covered them with these sticks and they're lovely. When he had his 40th birthday party, he made a coaster for everyone who came and there were over 100 people there. Daniel loves to sing. He likes television jingles, likes hymns and anthems and theme songs. He's a Port Power supporter, only because he's forced to be really by living in our house. But he likes to also sing the Adelaide Crows song, which is very sad. He has a very good memory and he can remember the lyrics to many, many songs. Before I had surgery on an ankle recently, Daniel and I walked together almost every day near our home. On our walks, I often picked a flower and gave it to Daniel because I think the smell, being sensory, is really good for Daniel. Often though, he would hold on to the flower and when we went to the cafe for a coffee, he would chew someone and walk over and give the flower to them. Daniel has very limited speech and a limited ability to articulate himself meaningfully or have interactive conversations. When Daniel doesn't want to go somewhere or do something, for example, if I put vegetables on his plate, he will say, "Don't want it." He has echolalia, which means he repeats the words and phrases that he hears. When Daniel was four years old, he was diagnosed with severe intellectual disability and epilepsy. It was another four years before Daniel was diagnosed with autism. I took Daniel to see doctors on a number of times because I suspected something was wrong. Before Daniel received a diagnosis, these doctors dismissed my concerns and told me it was all because I was a young mother. When Daniel was young, he was difficult. He often only slept two hours at night and even that was in bits and pieces. He regularly had tantrums and at times he screamed, bit, pinched and pulled hair. He also bit himself quite badly too. He was regularly suspended from school due to his behaviour. Daniel was nicknamed Little Houdini as a child because there were no locks, doors or fences that were Daniel-proof. He regularly disappeared from our home, his respite care and even from school. Even affording myself, the self-indulgence of going to the toilet could result in Daniel escaping. In 1992, when Daniel was 11 years old, I was pregnant with twins. We already weren't coping with Daniel despite doing everything we could and we were told by someone who was very experienced in the disability sector the twins would be in peril if Daniel were to remain in our family home. At the time, I was not aware of any options for supported accommodation for children with disability in Adelaide. Social workers suggested that I relinquish Daniel and have him enter the foster system. I was against doing that because I knew I couldn't cope. I wanted to maintain an active role in Daniel's life and for him to continue to have relationships with his sister and his soon-to-be brothers. Those things were very important to me. In mid-1992, when I was in the latter part of my pregnancy with the twins, three boys of a similar age to Daniel were relinquished into respite care and permanent accommodation arrangements were set up for these boys by the IDSC, a South Australian government agency that provided accommodation to other services for people with intellectual disability. I am so thankful to those other parents for having the courage to do what I could not.
So pausing there, you and Daniel have prepared a video for the Royal Commission so that the Commissioners can meet Daniel and get a sense of a day in the life of Daniel and the things he's particularly interested in. So we'll see some of his artwork and some of his singing.
Yes, I apologise for the sound because in some areas it's not that great.
So we'll just take a moment and the video will be queued up and then that will be played and the video will take about four minutes.
Okay, today we're going to talk about Daniel. Daniel's a 40-year-old man who lives with autism, epilepsy, intellectual disability and movement disorder. And I want you to see a really lovely side of Daniel because he has a very beautiful side. There are so many lovely things about Daniel and it's really important that you meet him. Would Daniel like two biscuits? Yes, please. Okay. When Daniel goes to bed at night, he likes the teddies on the bed. But when he goes to bed at night, he kicks them all off on the floor. So when he gets up in the morning, he and I make the bed together and then he puts all the teddies back into bed.
I've been to bed.
And he says, "I've been to bed to them."
I've been to bed.
"I've been to bed." "Go and get some sticks, I've got a bag for you." "To go and get some sticks." It's got the sorts of sticks that Daniel likes to break. I'm not sure what sort of tree this is. I think it's a gum tree, but this is his favourite type of tree and when we get to the park, he comes straight to this tree.
Bam!
Thumbs up!
Yes!
We went to...
The park.
The park and we got some...
Sticks!
Excellent!
Don't worry, he's... Tell to Mandy what this is.
Cop?
Cop? Cop shop? Is that cop shop?
That's clean.
Oh, you want it on now? Do you want cop shop on now?
That's clean.
He's doing his sticks lot at the same time, so breaking up sticks and watching cop shops is good fun for him.
Rudolph the reindeer, reindeer!
And...
If you ever, forever...
You wouldn't say...
You go down in history!
Daniel needs help in the shower and he needs help in the bathroom. He needs help with his shave because he can't get it exactly right. My sister-in-law says he looks like a newsreader because he's so handsome. But he does need assistance with shaving. Even if he didn't have a beard, he would need assistance because he misses lots of bits.
Good job!
When Daniel's finished his shave every day, he takes the cap off of it and blows the whiskers into the sticks. Need to go for a walk on the beach?
He's begging me to. Daniel, we're off for a walk, mate, down the beach. Oh, he loves to go for walks down the beach. Amazing when we go down here, anywhere to find a stick somewhere. Every time we go for a walk, he looks at what he's got with a few sticks, packs them, breaks them up at home.
Hope you've enjoyed meeting Daniel today and seeing the lovely side of him. There's so much good in him. Since he's come home, he's grown, he's developed and he has travelled a long distance. And I'm looking forward to seeing what's in the future.
That video and also to your husband Graham and to Daniel for sharing us a little insight into your life. So I want to take you back now in your statement where you start to talk about Daniel's journey through care and we're up to paragraph 23. So tell me when you're ready to start and we'll start at paragraph 23.
Okay. On July the 12th, 1992, just days before the twins were born, Daniel became the fourth person to move into the IDSC house in Torrensville, which I will now refer to as Haywood Avenue. In around 2000, one of the men that lived with Daniel became ill and moved to Strathmont Centre, a government-run institution providing accommodation for people with disability, only leaving three boys at that stage at Haywood. In about 2004, 2005, the other men who lived at Haywood moved to Strathmont to an empty villa as the Haywood Avenue property required extensive work. Shortly after that, Daniel and the two other men moved from that to a house that I will refer to as N Street. There were three IDSC houses on that same street that provided accommodation service to people with disability. Two of the houses, including the house that Daniel moved into, were built by the Spastic Centres of South Australia. So the house had wide doors and hallways with big indoor spaces which suited Daniel. At the time Daniel moved in, the house still had the old institutional bathrooms with a few showers in the same room. In this statement, I will refer to that house, as I said, as N Street. I understood that N Street was owned by a housing association, but the accommodation services were provided by the South Australian Government. During the time that Daniel lived at N Street, his accommodation services were always provided by the South Australian Government, but the name of the service provider changed from time to time. It was first IDSC, the Intellectual Disability Services Council. It went to Options Coordination, then to Disability SA and finally to the Department of Human Services. When Daniel first moved to N Street in 2004 to 2000, I'm not sure of the exact dates, he lived there with the two other young men who had lived with him at Haywood Avenue and at the Strathmont Centre. After a couple more years, a fourth resident moved in. The other houses on N Street, each housed three or four people with disability, each of whom I understood to have similar needs to Daniel. Daniel and the other residents at N Street attended structured activities on off-site services known as day options during the week. DHS support workers organised activities for them on the weekend. Day options were individually negotiated by me on behalf of Daniel. I organised for Daniel to go to a different day option to the other three residents at N Street. I did this deliberately because I felt they lived together through circumstance, not by choice and I didn't think they should be together 24 hours a day. From around 2006, Daniel's day option was at a farm called Windmere Park. As far as I recall, the time that Daniel lived at N Street, there were staff at the house all the time. There were one or two support workers on shift during the day and one support worker on shift throughout the night. The support workers at N Street were supervised by a shift supervisor who supervised a few different houses. The shift supervisor reported to a manager working in the DHS offices. Over the years that Daniel lived at Haywood Avenue and N Street, my family and I maintained very active involvement in his life. Daniel had regular visits from his family, generally on at least a weekly basis. On some occasions when I was not able to get there, Daniel's sister and brothers and sometimes his grandparents have made sure they take him out on a weekend for a whole day or if that was not possible, at least a meal out. There have never been any formal guardianship or financial administration orders in place for Daniel. I generally attended medical appointments with Daniel and DHS staff member usually attended too. At those medical appointments, I was consulted about Daniel's care both by the doctor and the DHS staff member. When I was consulted, I made decisions about care for Daniel or medication with input from the medical professionals and the accommodation services manager. I largely relied on support workers, shift supervisors and accommodation managers to keep me informed about any relevant medical issues for Daniel. In terms of financial decision-making, I understood from my professional experience in the disability sector that DHS received a percentage of the client's disability support pension on a board and lodging basis. And I'm aware that the same arrangements were in place for Daniel when he lived at N Street. I was aware that there was an amount of money from that disability support pension that was for Daniel's use that was transferred into a trust account, Daniel's account. I understood from accommodation service managers that Daniel's account was administered through an internal financial department for DHS. I had no access to Daniel's account and I did not receive bank statements for that account. I was not privy to the records kept at N Street about Daniel, about Daniel, including reports or records about how his money was spent. I do not know what the formal arrangements were for authorising expenditure of Daniel's money from his account. So far as I was aware, DHS managed his finances and personal affairs with some consultation with me, particularly for large purchases. It was my expectation that Daniel would be given a weekly allowance and he would use this for expenses such as takeaway food and outings. Decision-making for Daniel continued more or less in this way until he moved out of N Street into my home in February 2019, although his finances continued to be managed by DHS for a year. Daniel lived at N Street for about 15 years. In that time, I learned a lot about how best to advocate for my son. I learned to pick my battles and raise things only that I thought was absolutely necessary to be addressed. Otherwise, I was conscious of the need to maintain strong relationships with the staff and with DHS. I had good relationships with some workers over the years. I have outlined the issues that became acute for me and Daniel in the later years of his time at N Street. Over the years Daniel lived at N Street, I found his standard of grooming and hygiene could be quite variable. It was not such an issue I felt I needed to raise initially. However, from 2017, I noted that Daniel was sometimes dressed in clothes that looked like they didn't belong to him and at times he smelled, often of feces and very bad breath when we came to pick him up on Sundays. Generally, if an issue of that kind arose, I spoke with the accommodation services manager. He was generally understanding and said that he would raise issues with the workers, but I didn't notice any significant improvement to Daniel's standards of grooming or hygiene. While Daniel was living at N Street, there was an occasion when my husband and I took Daniel on a holiday. This trip required substantial planning. I provided a long list of things to be packed and the dates of the trip to the accommodation service manager, Wayne Cunningham. Wayne provided this to staff by email at least a week before the trip. However, on the day of our departure, I called and they'd told me they'd forgotten about the trip. When we arrived to pick Daniel up for the holiday, his bags were packed. However, when we got to Melbourne, we found that other people's clothing has been packed rather than Daniel's own. I also found that staff had not packed enough medication to last the week. This meant we had to cut our holiday short and return to Adelaide as Daniel was on a complicated medication regime with some requiring special permissions, so it was not going to be possible to get them replaced in Melbourne. When we returned to Adelaide, I called Wayne and explained why we'd be back from our holiday early because staff had not packed enough medication. Wayne apologised for what had happened.
So in a pause there and I want to ask you just a few questions about the financial arrangements.
Sure.
And we're about to touch on a topic where the financial arrangements became very relevant to you. But over the time that Daniel lived at N Street, do you recall having any discussions with anyone about the financial arrangements?
On occasions, I would say that if he needed something, often we provided things that he needed. Staff would let me know if he was running short of jeans or something like that. But we would have discussions that, you know, they could go and purchase items that he needed, but that was as far as it went.
And do you know whether, in terms of Daniel himself, whether there was ever any education or training for him to understand managing his own money and being able to make decisions about what he wanted to spend his money on?
Daniel would have had difficulty understanding the concept of finances. But even now, if we go and purchase something for Daniel, we always take him with us if we're purchasing clothes and we always show him the clothing and give him the opportunity to choose which clothing he would like.
And would it be fair to say that when Daniel first went into care, then at that stage you just relied on the department to manage all aspects of his life? But you were still his guardian, were you not, till he was the age of 18?
Yes, that's correct. I was still, and I was still his mother and that's a mother that just came naturally that I was the person who was contacted with issues. Initially, he wasn't in receipt of a disability support pension, but as he got older and when he did become, when he did get, when he did receive a pension, then we actually, we were happy for him to enter the same arrangements as most people in then IDSC care and that they had a financial department that oversaw that. And for me, that was a good thing because I didn't have to worry about paying bills and things like that.
And was it the case that because those arrangements for Daniel in terms of where he was living and how he was living his life really continued from when he was 18 and to become an adult? But no one gave any direct thought to, well, what do we need to do now that he's 18? Do we need to examine what we do around a guardianship relationship? Do we need to think about as an adult, how might he manage his money? Or what applications we would make for support pensions and the like? Do you have any memory about what happened when he turned 18?
Look, from my, from my understanding and my recollections of those times, I had talked to people from SECAT, which is a South Australian civil and administrative tribunal, used to be called the Guardianship Board. I'd talked to people from the Guardianship Board and asked, did they feel that I needed to make applications? And they had said no, you know. I could, whenever Daniel was at hospital or having any treatment, I went anyway and as his mother, I was able to sign for him to have any treatment. With the finances, I was really happy to just leave them to DHS to sort out.
All right, well, that might then take us back to your statement, to that part starting from paragraph 43 because this is when the issues around the finances and expenditure became a matter of concern that you felt you needed to raise with the department. So can I ask you to take up reading again from paragraph 43?
Yep. On October the 20th, 2018, I was telephoned by a support worker, who I will call ABL. ABL asked if he could purchase new pillows and bedding using the funds that Daniel had accumulated. I agreed but asked that they take Daniel to the shops to buy the items. ABL informed me that this was not possible because Daniel was asleep. Because it was already 4:30 on a Saturday and the shops were about to close, I suggested that I would take Daniel to the shops the following day. ABL was reluctant to proceed in this way. I asked him if they had already purchased the bedding and was told no. However, when I arrived the next day, I found the bedding had been purchased. I viewed the receipt, which showed that the purchase valued at around $270 was made at 3:30pm the day before. The following day, I wrote a letter of complaint to Wayne Cunningham, the manager, outlining my concerns in full. I was troubled that my permission had been sought after the fact and worried about the staff member not being truthful.
Can I pause you there? So you've included for the Royal Commission a copy of the letter and Commissioners, you'll find that behind tab 10 in Hearing Bundle A. And Ms Rogers, have you got that letter with you as well?
Yes.
All right. So if you look at the document behind tab 10... All right, so if you look at the document behind tab ten. And that's the letter that you sent to Mr Cunningham?
Yes, that's correct.
And you say at the bottom of the letter, I can just draw your attention to that. "I let a lot of things go, but this is deceptive behaviour by the staff involved. And it concerns me that if they would lie to me about this, and yes, I would have been annoyed that they didn't include Daniel in the shopping trip, what else will they lie about? I am disappointed to say the least." So this is, this was a significant event. Some people might say, oh, it's just, you know, an oversight and maybe Daniel didn't want to go. There might be an explanation behind this. But for you, you wanted to raise it because it went to a question of trust, is that right?
There were several things involved in this, which are in the letter too. But one of them is to pay that exorbitant amount for a quilt, for a comforter, for someone who has night time incontinence, really bothered me. And the fact that Daniel wasn't included in the purchase bothered me and the fact that I was lied to bothered me. So I had several issues with this occurrence.
Okay. All right, can I take you back to pick up from where you left off? So we were at the end of paragraph forty-five, so starting at forty-six?
Just weeks after this incident, I followed up on my complaint with Wayne. He told me that the complaint had been escalated to the Incident Management Unit, the IMU within DHS. But it had been referred back to Wayne to deal with at a local level. He said that he had been following up with the staff and that the staff member became upset. He stated there were some issues at N Street and that was the extent of the resolution to that complaint. These issues continued and increasingly troubled me from two thousand and seventeen, in part because things didn't seem to be improving for Daniel. However, I felt it was a situation that I could work with. My view changed following some unexplained bruising in October two thousand and eighteen and in February two thousand and nineteen, which I will describe. October two thousand and eighteen, on the twenty-eighth of October, the week after I had complained, when Graham and I picked Daniel up, he was wearing a jacket. When we got home, I removed the jacket and I saw some bruises on Daniel's inner arm. The bruises were close together and they looked about the size of a forefinger. I asked Daniel what had happened and he growled. I can't remember his exact words. I took a photo of the bruising and those photos are here.
All right, so you have said that you'd like the Royal Commissioners to see the photographs. So we'll put them up on the screen, but can I give anybody watching the hearing, either here in the hearing room or also online, that there's a number of photographs that will now show in relation to the bruising on Daniel that may be confronting? And this is the first set of photographs, there's some more to come. So I'll just give that warning to anyone who might be distressed before we show those photographs so that they can take a break and resume with us as we go along. Commissioners, you'll find the copy of the photographs behind tab eleven and tab twelve in hearing bundle A. All right, so Ms Rogers, we'll just put those up. So these are photos that you took at the time, you noticed the bruising.
Yes, they are.
And given the nature of the bruising, that concerned you? And you thought you needed to report it, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, and so we've had those photos up. Can I take you now to paragraph forty-nine? You can tell the Royal Commission, what did you do when you took those photographs?
I emailed a copy of these photographs to Wayne Cunningham on that day. I no longer have a copy of the email. I later, I had a later phone call with Wayne during which he told me he had again referred the incident to the IMU. I'm not aware of the outcome of the referral or whether the bruising was investigated. I had seen some minor bruises or other unexplained minor injuries on Daniel in the past. However, the bruises I saw on Daniel's arm concerned me because of the size and proportion made me think they were caused by someone grabbing Daniel's arm. I was worried as the bruises appeared the week after I made a complaint about the bedding. And I was concerned that in some way, this was connected to my complaint. And it made me more alert to similar injuries happening again.
All right, and then you say you didn't notice any further bruising on Daniel until February twenty nineteen. And the events that you're about to describe and read in your statement were very significant events. So take your time, and if you feel that you want me to jump in and read some of the paragraphs, I'm very happy to do so. But let's start with paragraph fifty-two.
Okay, on February the twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen, at five fifty-four PM, I received a phone call from a support worker, who I will call ABM. ABM informed me that Daniel had a large bruise on his back and he asked me if it was okay to call a locum doctor. I absolutely agreed. At eight thirty-three that night, the locum doctor called me. The locum told me he felt that Daniel needed to be checked at the hospital for internal bleeding. He recommended we take Daniel to the hospital. I asked ABM to take Daniel to the hospital and said Graham and I would meet them there. N Street was only five minutes from the drive from the Queen Elizabeth Hospital and we were about twenty minutes away. When Graham and I arrived at the hospital, Daniel was sitting in the waiting room of the emergency department with another support worker, who I will call ABN, and a night supervisor. While we were in the waiting room, I looked at the bruising on Daniel's back and I was shocked to see the extent of the bruising around Daniel's waist, going from his spine to in the front of his knifes. I took two photographs of those bruises and copies of those will probably come up now.
So you, you want to show those photographs as well?
Yes, and I don't want to show the third photograph, although the commissioners will see that.
So commissioners, there are three photographs. The two that will show appear behind tab thirteen in the bundle and tab fourteen. You have an additional photo at tab fifteen, but the one at tab fifteen will not appear on the screen. All right, so Ms Rogers, can I just ask you so that commissioners can see the angles of it? So that first photo where Daniel has the T-shirt on, so it's on a slight angle, so you can just explain to us sort of what the angle was and how you took that photo?
Yeah, he was standing in the waiting room in the emergency department and I took the photo from my phone. The second photo I took was when he was laying on the bed in the emergency department.
So what is depicted on the first photograph is, that's Daniel's back?
Yes, sorry, that's Daniel's back.
So you can see the bruising continue from about the middle of Daniel's back and it continues round to his side where the photograph ends.
Yep.
And the second photograph is the continuation of the bruise, so on Daniel's front.
Yes.
And that's the photo that you took when he was lying down, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
So I hope that assists the commissioners to see the nature and extent of the bruising. So you were shocked when you saw this bruising?
I was horrified. And in the third photograph, which the commissioners will see, which I took the next day at home, and I'm not putting that up because it's, it's a photograph when Daniel got out of the shower. But I didn't notice it on the day, but when I look at it, there's actually more bruising down his leg, which you can see down his leg.
On his upper thigh?
Yes, his upper and partway down his thigh as well, about halfway down his thigh.
All right, so we're on paragraph fifty-four and you've described the photographs and we've made the reference there. Can I take you back to what happened when you arrived at the hospital? This is paragraph fifty-five, can we take it up from there?
Shortly after Graham and I arrived at the hospital, the worker returned to N Street to finish his shift. The night supervisor stayed for a while, at some point, he had to go. He came back that night to see how Daniel was going. I stayed overnight at the hospital with Daniel. Daniel required a scan to check for internal bleeding, so it was important that I be here. The night in the hospital was not an easy night for Daniel. He's not a cooperative patient and because he is fearful, especially of needles. Staff at the hospital were lovely and they listened to everything I said. They even put a cartoon on for Daniel. But it's okay if I just describe the process?
Yes, of course.
For Daniel to have any sort of procedure, there is a drug called midazolam, which actually is like a sedative. And for most of us, if we had one vial of midazolam, we would be knocked out, we would be unable to fight and we probably wouldn't have a recollection of what had happened. Well, for Daniel to have any procedure, he has four vials of midazolam, which are given hidden in a bottle of Coke. And then after that, it takes six security guards to hold him down to it and get a needle into his arm. So it was quite stressful night for him.
It was a stressful night for you and Graham as well.
Yeah, yeah, it's very sad, it's very difficult for Daniel, so he's terrified. So Daniel had scans in the early hours of the Saturday morning. The results revealed no internal damage or bleeding, so Daniel was discharged. I decided we would take him back to our house and where he and I could both have a sleep in quiet and comfort. On the way home, we stopped at the house where Daniel had been living so we could collect Daniel's morning medication. When we drove into the driveway, Daniel became distressed. He held on to his seatbelt constantly and repeatedly saying, don't want it, don't want it. I told Daniel he could stay in the car, but I had to go and get his medication. Then he settled. I went to the house and asked the support worker on night duty, who I will now call ABP, for Daniel's medication. Daniel's medication was packed in clear sachets. ABP gave me only one sachet of tablets and I knew Daniel had two sachets of tablets, of pills in the morning. So I asked him to go back and get the second sachet. He informed me there was only one sachet in Daniel's medication box, but I insisted that he go back and check. And when I looked closer at the sachet, I realised that he had given me a different client's medication. Because the drugs did not look the same as the other clients and I noticed that the name was on the sachet, I asked him to go back and get Daniel's medication and then drove Daniel home so we could both have some sleep. However, I do have to say that when I told the staff member, I said to him, look, this is not Daniel's medication, this is another client's medication. He said to me, oh, are you sure? I was absolutely sure. So later that day, I called the support worker, who had called me the night before to tell me about Daniel's bruises. Daniel and I weren't sure about bringing Daniel back to N Street.
So just Graham, Graham and I?
Oh, I'm sorry, Graham and I, sorry. Graham and I weren't sure about bringing Daniel back to N Street, but we trusted ABM and ABN, who were on shift. They assured me they would watch Daniel well. They said they would take him to Club Cool, a dance and music event that was on the next day at a local hotel. So we took Daniel back that afternoon, that is my biggest regret. We didn't visit Daniel on the Sunday as we usually did because we thought he was going to Club Cool.
What's Club Cool?
Club Cool is a, it's a live music event that's held at the Governor Heimlich Hotel and it's specifically held one Sunday afternoon a month specifically for people with disabilities to come and they can eat and they can have fun and they can listen to music. So, sorry. On the Sunday night, I called the workers to see how Daniel was going and they told me they needed to go and do food shopping. So they took Daniel with them instead of going to Club Cool. On Sunday, the twenty-fourth of February, I emailed a staff member at Daniel's Day Option Provider, Windmere Park, and asked if Daniel had been involved in any falls or altercations. On the same day, I emailed Wayne Cunningham and asked him to call me as soon as he got in on the Monday morning. In the morning of Monday, the twenty-fifth of February, Wayne called me to say he was at the office and I told him I was coming to see him. I drove to the DHS office where Wayne worked and showed him the photographs I had taken of Daniel's bruises. He was distressed, he cried and he looked like he was in shock. He told me he didn't know anything about the bruising. While I was with Wayne, I sent an email from my phone to Muriel Kirkby, the Director of Accommodation Services at DHS, attaching the photographs of Daniel's bruising. And I asked Muriel to call me, she did. We arranged to meet Muriel, Caroline Warren, the area manager, and Sandra Wallace, the regional manager at the house. Graham and I arrived at the house early for the meeting. Daniel was home as he couldn't go to day options due to the hot weather. He looked distressed and he refused to leave his room. We sat in his bedroom for him, waiting for everyone to arrive. In his room, the dust was very thick. The floors and walls were very dirty. It looked like the floors had not been swept for a long time. Staff offered to make Daniel a sandwich. I said that would be great, but Daniel refused to go into the kitchen to eat. Staff brought the sandwich to Daniel's room, but he refused to eat anything. He was on to me, holding on to me very tightly and he would not let go of my arm. At one point, I took my hand away to scratch my face and he became upset and pulled my hand back into his. This was not usual behaviour for Daniel. Muriel, Wayne, Caroline and Sandra arrived at the house for the meeting. I talked to them in Daniel's bedroom. I told them what had happened on the Friday night, that the bruises that had been found on Daniel and that he had been taken to hospital. I also complained about the cleanliness of Daniel's bedroom and more generally, the cleanliness of the house. During the meeting, other clients were coming in and out of Daniel's bedroom while we tried to talk. It was a very awkward situation. Daniel appeared to be quite distressed and I wanted to remove him from the environment quickly. Graham and I packed a few items of Daniel's clothing into his suitcase and we left with an agreement that we would talk to Wayne, Sandra, Caroline and Muriel later about what we should be doing about Daniel's accommodation arrangements. I was told there were several alternatives to that house and I could call them when I was ready to discuss this. Daniel stayed home with us for that week. He didn't attend his day option. Muriel, Sandra and Wayne kept in touch over the following weeks. Sandra rang regularly, at least once a week, to see how Daniel and I were going and she reminded us about alternative accommodation options that might be available to Daniel. Despite these offers, Graham and I decided that Daniel could not go back, either to live, or especially not to live at N Street. Daniel seemed to be traumatised, he was very unsettled at night. And if we mentioned N Street in a conversation, he became very distressed and he would start hitting himself in the head. Graham and I started referring to the accommodation as NS to stop him becoming distressed. I decided we needed to give him an environment we knew he would be safe and secure in. At the time Daniel moved out of N Street and into our house in February two thousand and nineteen, I was not aware of any plans to close N Street. On February the twenty-sixth, two thousand and nineteen, Wayne Cunningham called me and asked me to report Daniel's injuries to the police. That evening, I took Daniel to the Port Adelaide Police Station and made a statement. I didn't think at the time the police would even follow this up as Daniel has very limited speech and had not been able to tell us what had happened to him. Over the course of the next few months, the police investigated the matter. The police sent a specialist communication officer to try and talk to Daniel, but it was deemed that Daniel would be unable to provide a statement. I have not seen a copy of the police report. The police officer who investigated Daniel's injuries told me he investigated for several weeks and he had interviewed and visited, interviewed staff and visited N Street, but he was not able to investigate the matter any further. The police officer mentioned to me that there was a theory that Daniel had had a fall. This was the first time this had been suggested to me and came as a surprise because I had never known Daniel to have a fall or to bruise easily. Following my report to the police on the twenty-sixth of February, I was told that DHS would also investigate the incident. I had some professional contact with Muriel Kirkby during the following period of Daniel moving out of N Street and Muriel always asked me how Daniel was going. She told me on a number of occasions that DHS did not have the answers to what had happened or to what had caused the bruising. Muriel apologised. Muriel apologised, um, for what had happened to Daniel numerous times, although we never actually received a formal apology from DHS. At some point, I emailed the Windermere, um, Park staff, um, sorry, at some point after I emailed the Windermere Park staff member.
Just pausing there, so that's the provider of Daniel's day option?
Yes, um, they replied to my email and told me there had been no altercations or falls involving Daniel that had been reported at Windermere Park, but staff had also seen the bruising on Daniel's back on Monday, the 18th of February. On Monday, the 4th of March, we decided to drive Daniel back to Windermere Park ourselves. Knowing Daniel's reaction, what had had been when we returned to N Street, he quite, he appeared quite happy on the drive to Windermere Park. Daniel was singing and when we got to the farm gate, Graham asked Daniel where he was going and Daniel replied with a smile, farm, so we knew he was going to be okay there. I spoke with the Windermere Park staff member when we arrived. She told me that the staff had seen the bruising on the other side of back, Daniel's back earlier that week, but had not reported it to the accommodation service or me. She said it had looked like someone had tried to cover up the bruises with some type of red paint. And when Windermere Park washed the red paint off Daniel, they uncovered the start of the bruising. She told me they also had photographs of the bruising and I asked why they didn't tell me about Daniel's bruising.
Sorry, just go, just go back. So you asked why?
I asked why they hadn't, sorry. I asked why, I asked her why they hadn't told me about Daniel's bruising at the time they discovered it and I said that if there were any further incidents, I needed to know about them. I was very upset with Windermere Park for not reporting this to me or to DHS. I asked the staff member if they had reported the incident to anyone else and she said they had reported it to the NDIS Quality and Safeguarding Commission on the 28th of February, 2019. She provided me with a copy of the report and the incident notification. This is attached.
And so Commissioners, a, a copy is behind tab 16 in hearing bundle A and I don't need to take Ms Rogers to that document. But, um, but you received a copy of this from the staff at Windermere Park, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Um, I was not involved in or consulted about the DHS investigation. Daniel was living with me after February 2019 and IMU never sought to interview him or me. About a year after the bruising occurred, and I think it was a bit longer than a year, we initiated a meeting with Stuart Dodd, the Director of the IMU. Stuart told me that DHS investigation was inconclusive and he was unable to provide a copy of the report to me. Stuart said if I wanted to see a copy of the report, I would need to make a Freedom of Information application. I didn't make the inf, uh, the application because I felt the process would be too onerous and I just didn't have the time or the energy to do so.
All right, so I want to ask you a few questions if we can pause there. So first of all, in relation to Windermere Park, and you were told that a report had been made to the NDIS Quality and Safeguards Commission. And the reason for that is that with respect to Daniel's day programmes, that that was part of his NDIS plan and funding at the time.
Yes, that's correct.
So Windermere Park was an NDIS registered provider and so Daniel, if something happened to Daniel while at the day programme, that locked in the NDIS, uh, Quality Safeguards Commission reporting line. You understood that?
Yes, that's correct.
And were you aware of that at the time of this incident?
Yes, yes, I was.
All right. And in terms of them, if the incident, um, or the bruising had occurred at the home, that was not something that could be reported to the Quality and Safeguards Commission? Because that was, um, services provided by the state, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct and the state, um, were providing in-kind services. So they weren't answerable, I guess, to the, um, Quality and Safeguarding Commission.
So you understood in terms of the state addressing the issue around how Daniel had the bruising and what type of injury he must have sustained to have that level of bruising, that that would be subject to any investigation within the state DHS, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
And so Mr Cunningham told you that the matter had been reported to the IMU, the Incident Management Unit?
Yes.
So look at your paragraph 78. Um, is it the case that you were aware that the IMU would conduct an investigation? So you're aware of that?
I was aware that they would conduct an investigation and they did tell me that they wouldn't start their investigation until after the police investigation.
Right, so you anticipated my question about just in terms of which went first. So if the police were investigating, you're aware IMU would wait until they could commence an investigation pending the police investigation. All right. Now you say in paragraph 78, you weren't involved or consulted about the DHS investigation at, at all.
Never.
No one asked you for the photographs?
No one asked for the photographs, although I had already supplied them.
Hmm.
Um, no one ever came and talked to Daniel. I did suggest at one stage that perhaps we could put photographs of staff in front of Daniel to see his reactions, but, um, that was not agreed upon. Um, and no one ever came out and asked us what we thought happened. Um, we'd had him the day previously, so no one ever came out and said to us like, did he have a fall on the Sunday or, um, you know, but because the bruising was starting to come out later on the Monday. So no one ever came and asked us and said, um, how was he on the Sunday? Was he upset? Were there any evidence of anything on the Sunday? Because I would have known because I took him to the toilet a couple of times.
And, um, in terms of the way in which the IMU would conduct the investigation, did anyone tell you what that process would be?
No.
And in terms of, uh, the IMU investigation, did you know whether there had been any contact between DHS and Windermere Park? In terms of what you were told at Windermere Park, that the staff washed red paint off? Did you know, did you know anything about the exchange of information, if at all, between Windermere Park and DHS?
No, I don't know about that, but I do know the police went to Windermere Park.
Okay. And in terms of, um, the results of the investigation, are you telling the Royal Commission in paragraph 78 that you had to initiate a meeting with the person in charge of the IMU? That was Mr Dodd?
That's correct.
But he agreed to have the meeting with you?
Yes, he had, we had met with him, um, in the early stages when he was telling us that the meeting would, um, would, that they would follow up after the police, but he was going to get back to us and he never ever did. Um, so we had initiated that meeting which occurred in July the following year.
All right, so that's what I just want to ask you timing wise because, um, Ms Boswell says in her statement that on the 8th of July, 2020, she had a meeting with you and Graham and, uh, that also, as I understand included, she says the Director of Accommodation Services, I don't know whether you know who that was at the time, and the Director of the IMU were present.
Yes.
And Ms Boswell says she recalls that you were upset, that you hadn't been contacted by the Director of IMU at the conclusion of the investigation. And, uh, Mr Dodd apologised for this. And Ms Boswell says she apologised on behalf of DHS for the failings of the department and the handling of the incidents in relation to, uh, the, the bruising. So do you have a recollection of attending that meeting?
Yes, I do, yeah.
And is that the meeting that you're referring to in paragraph 78? So a year or so after bruising?
Yes, so it's probably closer to 15 months afterwards, but.
And so it was at that meeting, uh, that you say that you asked for a copy of the report?
Yes.
Right, Ms Boswell doesn't mention that in her statement, but you've got a recollection that you were told at that meeting that if you wanted a copy of the report, you had to make a Freedom of Information application.
That's correct, yes.
And you've now seen a copy of that report in, if you've seen the, in the material from the state?
Okay.
All right, Commissioners, I'm, um, conscious of the time. It's about five past 11 and I had said to Ms Rogers that we'll take this bit by bit. So I think we've finished the first hour of what we need to do. So before we turn to part two, which is after leaving N Street, Commissioners, if it's appropriate, we might take a morning tea adjournment now?
Yes, uh, we'll resume, um, I think at, uh, 11:25.
Yes.
At that time, is that convenient?
Yes, thank you Chair.
Yes, thank you very much. Please, please have a break and we'll resume at 11:25.
The Royal Commission. The Royal Commission has resumed.
Yes, Ms Eastman.
Uh, thank you Chair. Before we start, um, on life after leaving N Street, Commissioner McEwen, you have a question that you want to ask arising out of paragraph 71 in relation to the police investigation?
Yep, thank you, Ms Eastman. Ms Rogers, if I can take you back to paragraph 70?
Yes, yeah.
Where you described the police sent a specialist communication officer to try to talk to Daniel. Just tell me, what was your observation or experience of that particular interaction?
Okay, um, that was, they actually came without us knowing they were coming, so they turned up. And I wasn't home at the time. Graham was home with Daniel. Um, and he said that the police officer involved attempted to talk to Daniel, but Daniel's, um, understanding was very clearly limited and she didn't have any success. And her feedback to the investigating detectives was that Daniel would be unable to, unable to give evidence.
And how did you feel about that, you and Graham?
Look, I felt, I understood that. I knew that Daniel would be unable to give evidence, but, um, and I think the police kept us informed regularly and it was good. I, I still feel there are answers out there and I still would like to know what happened. Um, I guess we're never gonna know. Um, and, and I think the police, the police officer, when he came to tell us that they were closing the investigation, he said to us, every single shift that I've been on, I've done something on Daniel's case.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you.
All right, so can we pick up from paragraph 79?
Sure. After we made the decision for Daniel to move home, Graham went to the house on the Wednesday, the 27th of February, to pick up the rest of Daniel's clothing and his other belongings. Graham told me that he picked up the boxes, um, of Daniel's belongings and that staff had packaged for him to bring home. When I unpacked the boxes, I discovered there were no jumpers, um, no coats or T-shirts and only three polo shirts. I knew that Daniel had several jumpers and coats and I'd given him three new T-shirts the week previously when he'd been home, when he'd come home dirty. I also thought that he would have had at least 15 T-shirts and 20 polo shirts, um, at the house. A lot of the clothing had been packed, um, that had been packed was either bleached, damaged or dirty and many of the items belonged to the other men who lived there. I also know that there were at least two coats in that house that belonged to Graham because when Daniel had come home cold, um, he'd been sent home with Graham's coats on, so they had disappeared too. Um, staff had also packed a large box of dirty and broken shoes which contained a pair of ladies' thongs. Um, I don't know.
You've got some photos. Do you want to show those photos?
I'm happy for them to be put up if you.
So Commissioners, these are behind tab 17 and tab 18 and 19, I think. So this is a collection of shoes?
There were actually about two boxes and I don't think there was one good pair of shoes in them. They were all filthy and broken.
Had you seen Daniel wear any of these shoes?
Probably not and some of them were, um, obviously, Daniel has a size 13 male foot and some of them were like size seven and eight.
Okay. All right, so, uh, back to paragraph 81.
Yes, so given the incident with the quilt earlier, only a few months previous, I had asked Graham to ensure that he brought that quilt home, um, that had been purchased in October. Graham told the staff, um, told me that staff were unable to find the quilt. Then after some time searching the house, they came out saying that it had been located. When Graham returned, he gave me the quilt which the support workers had provided. I looked at the quilt and later the tag on the quilt. Um, and it appeared, it appeared to have the initials of another person. And I don't think we need that photo.
No, I won't, you've given the, a copy of the photo to the Royal Commissioners as part of your evidence, but we don't need to put that on the screen.
Um, I, I believe they had adjusted the, um, the name tag on it and changed it. Even, they even used a different colour pen, so it wasn't even very smart changing of the name on the quilt. So, um.
To 83, I think we're up to.
Yeah. Uh, we returned all of the clothing and bedding to DHS that didn't belong to Daniel. A lot of the bedding, um, was for single beds and Daniel actually had a double bed. So we returned all of that. Uh, staff had forgotten on that day to pack Daniel's medication and I was also aware of the fact that Daniel had some cash at the house from his weekly allowance. But this money was not packed for him either. Graham then had to return that day to collect Daniel's cash and his, um, and his medication. Obviously, he couldn't go without the medication. Um, I complained about the quilt, the dirty clothing and the broken shoes to Wayne. DHS then transferred $500 to us, um, which I was told was to reimburse for the clothing and the shoes. Uh, DHS continued to administer Daniel's finance for a year after he moved out. We'd asked them to do that. Um, but from, and from rec, uh, recollection, the $500 from DHS was transferred into our account so we could purchase new clothing for Daniel. We did so and we kept receipts for all of our purchases and we paid out more than $1,000 to replace the clothing that he needed. From February 2019, DHS transferred $400 to us on a fortnightly basis, which I understood was, um, drawn from Daniel's pension. That was about half of the amount that he previously used to pay for his board and lodgings. I nominated the amount that, um, and then we paid for all of Daniel's needs from that, from his clothing, medication, everything.
Can I just pause in there? Uh, after DHS administering Daniel's finances for a year or so, did you then make arrangements that you became the nominee in terms of managing any finances?
No, um, in fact, Daniel had some funding in, um, in trust for him, um, quite a large amount of money and I requested that, it was after a year and so we took over Daniel's finances. I went to Centrelink, set up a separate account and Centrelink were more than happy to transfer that to me. But the department were concerned because I didn't have an administration order, but neither did they.
Okay.
So, um, and I didn't want to have to go down that path to formalise it because I knew that formalising an administration order is actually taking quite a, there's actually quite a lot of adminis trivia involved in that sort of a, um, process. And then you have to, um, provide books to the public trustee every year and it has to be, if you're, if you are appointed as a formal administrator. And it becomes quite an onerous task.
Okay, so now we're going to turn to Daniel's life now.
Ms Eastman, sorry, before we go on to that, may I ask one question about you, the medication that you were just talking about? You've described in your evidence that, you know, they sometimes didn't pack the right medication when you went away on holiday, uh, they gave you the wrong one. How confident were you that the staff in the house were giving Daniel the medication in the correct way? Can you go, describe your observations on that?
Sure. Um, they had to sign off on everything. And initially, I wasn't that unconfident, but after being given the wrong person's medication by a staff member who'd been there for. being given the wrong person's medication by a staff member who'd been there for several months, I actually at one stage rang Wayne, who was the service manager, and asked him, was the other person on blood thinners? Maybe they'd given the wrong medication to Daniel? And, but no, that wasn't the case. So now, look, I look back and I wonder. But I guess, you know, it's, again, it's something that you're never going to be able to prove and it's a battle that, you know, I've got, no, I've got proof of what happened with Daniel. I've got proof of the bruising, I've got proof of the misappropriation of funds and the fact that the quilt disappeared straight away. So I don't know if that's a... It's probably, at the time, I thought maybe it was something we wanted to look into in case blood thinners were involved and that's what had caused the bruising. But now, I haven't really gone back there. I haven't really thought about that.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Rogers. Thank you, Mrs. Eastman.
Thank you. So before we start picking up from where you're up to in your statement, I just want to take you to a few things Miss Kirkby says in her statement. So she, in her statement, says she instructed the regional manager to reimburse you and Graham the five hundred dollars to cover the costs of the beddings and other items.
Yes.
And she also says this, and tell me if you remember this occurring. She said that she arranged for Daniel, for you and Graham to have counselling to assist you with the events that you had endured. Daniel had counselling with a specialist psychologist who had experience with, working with people with intellectual disability who had experienced trauma in their lives. And Daniel had received four sessions and you and Graham received two to three sessions and the sessions were funded by DHS. So do you remember that?
Yes, we did went and we went to see Muriel Kirkby and said that, you know, we were traumatised and so was Daniel. We took Daniel to the first session. During the first session, he became quite animated and was hitting himself in the head a lot and crying a lot. The next day, he actually bit someone. So we felt that bringing that stuff back to him and we knew that when we talked about that stuff in the house, that he did become distressed, so we decided not to pursue that. Graham and I had a session with the, so in response to that, Daniel had one session. And we just decided that it wasn't appropriate for him. Graham and I also had one session with the DHS councillor and that was really helpful to us. We actually looked at the different ways that we were handling it and because I was handling it on a very emotional level and Graham was handling it on a very practical level and that we only, we were going to have a second session, but when we came out to the reception area, there was about twelve people lined up waiting to make the next appointments and we said, no, we're not going to wait here in line, you know, we were quite emotional at the time. But then after we left there, we felt, we discussed it and we felt that that session had really helped us greatly and so we were able to move on. So we had, we did have, that's true, the sessions were offered to us and were funded, but we only had one session each. But that was our choice.
Okay. And then Miss Kirkby also says that she regularly called and met with you to see how Daniel was doing. And this would be approximately weekly. And she says, I'm aware that the regional manager called you weekly to ensure that you had support and to ensure Daniel had a smooth transition to living with you and Graham. And she says, and to ensure Karen and Graham were supported during this transition, DHS support staff were deployed to Karen and Graham's home every weekend at their request until Daniel had new NDIS arrangements in place for staffing. We're going to deal with the NDIS arrangement soon. So do you have a recollection of talking to Miss Kirkby on a weekly basis?
I have a recollection of talking regularly to Miss Kirkby and of Sandra Wallace ringing at least weekly just to see how we were going. And those phone calls were very regular. And I often met with Muriel just for different reasons, but we always talked about Daniel and she was always very supportive.
Okay. And what about deploying a support worker? So a DHS support staff were deployed.
Yep.
What happened in relation to that? So that was every weekend and what happened?
The first time, the first weekend, that was a couple of weeks after Daniel came home and the worker, who was the initial worker who made the phone call to me on the night about the bruising, he attended our home. He came and he took Daniel out, he took Daniel to the Cleland Wildlife Park and they had a lovely day out and because Daniel did particularly like this worker and they, when he, but it only occurred once because when the worker went back to the house, the other staff gave him such a hard time. They accused him of being too friendly with us and they they basically said, you know, that he was a bit of a turncoat and that he shouldn't be supporting us. And it just became incredibly difficult for him. He was bullied beyond belief from what he...
That's what he told you.
That's what he...
You don't, you don't know yourself, but that's what you were told.
But I have been, and I've been told by other people that he was and I do realise that, you know, he didn't, anyway, he came once and he didn't come back again.
Now, remember I asked you just before we had the break about paragraph seventy-eight of your statement, which is the follow-up of the IMU meeting?
Yes.
And the meeting that you referred to there, to your recollection, is the one that occurred on the eighth of July with Miss Boswell.
Yes, I do remember that meeting because it was the day after my birthday, so I do know that that was the right date.
So Miss Kirkby also says in her statement that she met with you and Graham on the twenty-fifth of February twenty nineteen, so that's much, that's the year before. And she said she met again with you, with Lyn Young, Stuart Dodd and Joe Young on the seventh of March twenty nineteen to discuss the investigation process as the matter had been referred to both IMU and the South Australian Police for Investigation. So I just want to make sure that I've covered the sequence of events and...
Yes, that's correct.
Do you have a recollection of that meeting as well?
I actually do. It's not...
Well, there's two meetings there.
Yes, so there were two meetings, but after that one, Stuart Dodd was going to get back to us with the results of theirs, but we didn't hear back from him, which was the result of the meeting on the eighth of July that we requested.
And so in terms of the questions that I asked you earlier about being involved or consulted on the DHS investigation, those meetings didn't elaborate on the policies, processes or systems for the investigation?
No, no. The only thing that I can say that would have been said at the first meeting would have been that they weren't going to start investigating until the police investigation had been completed.
All right, so I just wanted just to draw your attention to that part of Miss Kirkby's evidence. And she's giving some evidence later this afternoon, so we'll ask her about that as well. So can I take you back now to your statement? And I think we're up to paragraph eighty-eight. Eighty-eight, okay. So during the first few weeks after Daniel moved home in February two thousand and nineteen, he didn't settle at night and he often shouted and hit the walls during the night. After a period of settling in, Daniel has been very happy. He's now talking and eating a lot more. He's come so far in the last two years. For example, three years ago, a staff member told me they'd cancelled Daniel's dental appointment because he refused to walk upstairs at the dental clinic. In March this year, after several familiarisation visits to the specialist dental clinic in Adelaide, Daniel sat in the dentist's chair and allowed her to scrape user build-up calculus off his teeth. Now, I know you didn't want me to pause you there, but I'm going to...
It's okay.
When you talked about familiarisation visits, can you just explain that to the Royal Commissioners? And the Royal Commissioners have heard a little bit about the experience of people with intellectual disability visiting dentists and sometimes the struggle to even get through the door. So what, what happened in terms of March this year with the familiarisation visits? And is the specialist dental clinic in Adelaide a specialist service for people with intellectual disability? I don't need you to be long, but just help us...
No, that's okay. I believe it's a specialist service for people with disability. Daniel had, Daniel started going there after us bringing him home. We made appointments for him to go there. And they have, the familiarisations visits have been just for him getting in there, sitting in the chair, opening his mouth. And pre-COVID, we went probably two or three times, then everything stopped. But after COVID, they were bringing him in every three to four weeks just to get him used to things. They actually used the drill on his thumbnail so that he understood what was going to happen. And he has proved to be a really lovely patient. He doesn't, he can't tolerate a lot for a long period of time, but he will sit in the dentist's chair, open his mouth and actually allow them to do some work on his teeth.
Okay, all right, let's go to paragraph ninety.
Yep. Okay. Our lives have changed significantly since Daniel came home to live with Graham and me. Despite still being young, and I think sixty's still relatively young, I had to retire and give up my career to look after Daniel at home. I now have no income. Graham and I had to move out of the master bedroom to renovate it for Daniel as well as replacing all the carpets in our home with vinyl slats. We've also installed roller shutters on the doors and windows for noise control because Daniel can sometimes be very noisy and sometimes at three o'clock in the morning. We replaced our hot water service with a unit that we can moderate the temperature from inside the house so Daniel doesn't burn himself because he will play with the taps. We've also installed new swimming pool fencing and we remortgaged the house to pay for a lot of that. So Daniel did help out with some of the roller shutters and now, Daniel has nighttime incontinence. And sometimes he will manage to saturate his sheets in winter, as it is now, two quilts, two pillows, a Kylie mattress protector. And sometimes this will happen twice a night, which can put, which can mean that we will put eight loads of washing through our front load of washing machine a day. Our water and electricity bills have increased markedly, as did our gas and grocery bills. We installed solar panels, so that's helped. Graham was initially driving over a thousand kilometres a fortnight and forty hours a fortnight to drive Daniel to the pickup point from his day options, but we have renegotiated that. Daniel still reacts negatively to anything associated with End Street. Hearing the words or phrases like what's wrong or what's the matter or naughty make him very upset. If I say that was naughty, he becomes really, really upset. He still refuses to go anywhere near the place. At one stage, we were driving on a visit to Daniel's grandparents and he felt like a cake. He said he wanted a cake. So we knew there was a twenty-four for our bakery and we turned down the road that went past End Street. As soon as we turned into that road, Daniel became very upset and started saying don't want it and repeatedly hit himself in the head. We realised that even though we were happy to have Daniel home and he was very happy to be home, we needed more help through the NDIS. Daniel became an NDIS participant when he was living in End Street, but the assistance provided through his plan at that time was limited because his accommodation services were provided by DHS in kind. While the NDIS plan provided for Daniel's day options, it did not provide for any additional support before or after day options, respite care on the weekends, so there were also modifications that we needed to make to our home, so to make sure Daniel was safe. We therefore needed an NDIS plan review. In March two thousand and nineteen, I contracted the NDA and requested a change of circumstance meeting. It took several weeks to organise the planning meeting.
Mrs. Rogers, can I slow down just a little bit?
Okay, thank you. It took several weeks to organise the planning meeting and in the interim period, we had no NDIS support for Daniel apart from day options. In late April two thousand and nineteen, Daniel's plan was approved. This provided for Daniel to continue attending his day options as well as some funding for respite. It also provided funding to get assessments done that would provide further evidence of the extent of Daniel's support needs. Without funding for support during the week, home modifications and additional respite, Daniel's NDIS plan still wasn't really enough to meet his needs. We needed to go through the process of proving that what Daniel's needs were. This process required that I provide up-to-date reports that provided evidence of Daniel's support needs, which meant making appointments for psychometric assessments, an occupational therapy assessment, a sensory assessment, a behavioural assessment and a positive behaviour support plan. It all took months. It was like having to prove that Daniel had a disability all over again. During that time, the psychologist who was completing an assessment for Daniel went to the DHS to review Daniel's files to get more information about Daniel's supports in the accommodation setting. It was the psychologist's review of these notes that we discovered Daniel had been diagnosed with movement disorder and hypertriglyceridemia. We were not aware of either of these diagnoses. And there is a document from the psychologist.
And I don't think Commissioners will have a copy of that document in the hearing bundle, but I don't need to take you to that document.
In about August two thousand and nineteen, we gathered the evidence we needed to lodge a request for an internal review of Daniel's NDIS plan as I did not feel Daniel's plan was adequate. I was sent a review application form and I decided to make an appointment with the support coordinator to help me complete the form. I do not remember the date, but just over a week after I received the form and before I'd met with the support coordinator, I received a phone call from someone from the NDA who told me I needed to send the reports and the form back within an hour. I was extremely upset because I was on my way to a meeting and I was not going to be able to get that paperwork in within an hour. I explained I wanted to complete the form with the support coordinator and she agreed to give me until the end of the day to submit the reports gathered and forty-eight hours to complete the form. I met with the support coordinator and completed the documentation. I can't remember what date that was. Ultimately, Daniel's support coordinator sent the review application to the NDA on the tenth of September. On the tenth of October, I hadn't heard back from the NDA, so I sent another email asking where the review was up to. On the evening of the eleventh of October, I received a phone call from a delegate with the review team. The delegate informed me that the review was not going to be granted because we needed to have lodged the application within ninety days of the date of the plan, the date the plan was signed. I explained that it had taken longer than that to get the evidence the NDA required to consider more assistance for Daniel. She stated there was nothing that could be done as it was legislated. She did say that the assessments that we had done are so good that when Daniel's review comes up in April twenty twenty, Daniel should receive a much better package. On the seventeenth of October twenty nineteen, we received a letter from the NDA stating because the review of our application had taken longer than fourteen days, there would be an internal review of the discussion not to grant a review.
Decision?
Oh, sorry, decision, not to review, not to grant a review of Daniel's plan. I searched the NDIS website and discovered a letter can be sent to the chief executive officer of the NDA to request an internal review of the decision. I wrote to Martin Hoffman on the first of November, asking for his help.
All right, and you've provided a copy of this letter and Commissioners will find that behind tab twenty-two in the bundle. And I like that the letter is two pages and I don't think we need to put the entirety of the letter up on the screen. But I'd like you to just allow the Commissioners and those following this proceeding to get a sense of what your state of mind was. Oh, I've now got that on the screen, that's helpful. What your state of mind was when you decided to write to Mr. Hoffmann? when you decided to write to Mr Hoffman, the chief executive officer of the NDIS on the first of November twenty nineteen.
Yep.
So I don't need you to read the whole of the letter, but perhaps just those first few paragraphs may give us a sense of how you were feeling at that time and your sense of frustration.
Yes. I wrote to Mr Hoffman and I sent it just after he started at the NDIS. And the second paragraph is, in my life, I dealt with being told I was a young mother and there was nothing wrong with my child for four years. Then to be told my child was epileptic, retarded and would never be okay. I went through a broken marriage and then I had to face the guilt of not being able to provide the care that Daniel needed when he became too big for me to handle. I've always been involved and had, had Daniel at home a minimum of one day a week. And earlier this year, Daniel faced the trauma of being hurt in care. No one knows how, but he was badly injured. We've been expressing concerns about his care for the last few years, but this was major. We made the decision to bring him home and he, as he was unhappy and fearful. My life has been busy, hectic and on occasions quite traumatic. This all pales into insignificance when trying to deal with the NDIS. And I work in the sector.
And so you go on to describe what you had taken on in terms of the supports for Daniel on his return home. And then just at the end of the letter, you say, I'm asking you to, and then in capital letters, please help us? All right, so you remember sending that email to Mr Hoffman by around the first of November twenty nineteen, is that right?
Yes, that may, that was the date that I wrote the letter, but I sent it after he. I'm not sure what date he started, but I sent the letter after he started with the NDIS.
Was it your expectation that he personally would read the letter?
Well, I would have thought that he would have. And I've written to him since then too.
Okay, you did, you didn't receive a response?
I never received a response from that. I did get a phone call saying that Daniel had plenty of funding and that we weren't using it all. And I said, as I said to her, you know. We don't know what we're going to need because this is fairly new for us. But also, I didn't, I didn't like the fact that, that I was given an hour to get the paperwork in and then had to wait for a month for a reply to it.
All right, let's pick, pick things back up at paragraph one hundred and three.
One hundred and three. In December two thousand and nineteen, an occupational therapist came to our home and conducted an assessment of Daniel's en suite bathroom. They determined that the existing setup of Daniel's bathroom was not safe and made several recommendations, including the removal of the glass shower screen, installing of an accessible toilet and basin. And the replacement of existing tiles with slip resistant flooring. The occupational therapist prepared a report about, setting out the recommendations, which the, the report was completed on February twenty, on the twenty-fifth of February twenty twenty.
And you've provided a copy of the report and the quote?
Yes, that's correct. The quote provided by the contractor for the modifications was nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents. For these modifications to be funded through the NDIS, I needed to complete an assistive technology request. Which I signed on the fifth of May twenty twenty. Daniel's support coordinator submitted, submitted this request to the NDIS and the document is there. This was around the time that the scheduled review for Daniel was about to take place. I received a phone call from the NDIS planner who had met with us, my phone, for Daniel's planning meeting. Which we had also discussed the assistive technology request. She congratulated us, stating that Daniel's plan had been approved. She went through what had been approved and I asked about the bathroom, the home modifications. She stated that that request had been declined. I was extremely upset and said I would be requesting a review. Daniel's support coordinator, coordinator made three separate requests to the NDIS over a period of a month. For written reasons, via the decision of the assistive technology request.
So the decision to decline the AT request?
The AT request, which were eventually provided to Daniel's support coordinator.
And you've given us a copy of that document?
Yeah. So we applied for a review of the decision and we were advised that the review had been declined. I was advised by Daniel's support coordinator that we had twenty-eight days from the date of the internal review decision to submit an application for an appeal through the Administrative Appeals Tribunal.
Did you know what the Administrative Appeals Tribunal was?
Well, I did know, but I hadn't had any experience with them. So we engaged a lawyer to assist us and to submit the application and to represent Daniel at AAT. The application was submitted on the sixth of August and that application is enclosed. After submitting the application, a case conference was arranged, which was attended by our lawyer. Case con, at the case conference, an agreement was reached that the NDIS would fund the modifications to Daniel's bathroom to the value that was previously mentioned. The AAT ordered that the modifications be funded through NDIS.
And you've included a copy of the, the orders, yes.
Daniel now has a good plan covering his requirements, although the plan is significantly less than what it would be should Daniel live in supported accommodation. We found the NDIS process extremely difficult to navigate. It seemed that if we didn't meet a deadline, then Daniel would be denied support. But if they did so, it just added more layers of bureaucracy for us to complete. This is particularly concerning because I work in the disability sector. So I had a better than average understanding of the terminology and the process. And it was still almost impossible for us to navigate.
All right, so pausing there, you've told the Royal Commission some of your experiences in navigating the NDIS. And you've got a concern this has got to be ongoing for Daniel's life. Right, but I want you now to turn to the final part of your statement, which is your reflections on your experiences. So you start this at paragraph one hundred and twelve.
The past two years have been incredibly difficult and traumatic time for all of Daniel's family. We love Daniel dearly and we have supported him through this time to the best of our ability. It's been distressing at times not knowing how to help him, as we were never able to understand the trauma that he had been through. We have, as a family, attempted to give him support and confidence through the night terrace. We also assure him regularly that he will be staying with us. Having to deal with the bureaucratic expectations and jump through the flaming hoops of the NDIS has been a torturous experience, taking many hours and causing enormous stress to my husband and myself. Families play a vital role in the lives of their loved ones with disabilities. They have history, understanding, knowledge and commitment. And this needs to be recognised. Agencies and staff should work with families and make every effort to keep them informed and involved. If a support worker wins Lotto, they will probably not continue in the lives of the client they're supporting. If I win Lotto tomorrow, no matter where Daniel is, I will be there, bringing with me the invaluable knowledge. One of the things that happened, and I'll just jump in here, when Daniel was quite young and he'd cut himself. And people were trying to hold him down to give him a needle to anaesthetise him. And he actually arrested. So he was only about eighteen at the time. And I was with him and it was very traumatic. So that's why I insist on him giving, having the midazolam before he actually goes through any procedures. But it was a very traumatic time. But when you look at Daniel's, Daniel's notes, there's nothing in that. That's all been previously archived, you know, because it happened twenty years ago. But I know what will happen. If I'm there, I insist, but you know, if I'm not there and if it's just support workers and they take him to hospital, they're going to try and hold him down to give him a needle. And it could happen again. He could arrest again. And so I've got that knowledge of what's happened in the, in the history. I know how many vials of midazolam he needs. I know how to hold him. I know, and this sounds really corny, but the security guards actually told me on the night of this, one of the security guards came back and asked how Daniel was going. And he'd been holding one of Daniel's legs for the period of trying to get the needle in. And he said to me, do you know, he said he was so tense and so strong when I was holding his legs, but when you were holding his head and singing to him, I felt him relax. And no support worker is going to do that for Daniel. No support. So I just, I really reiterate that families are so important. Families have so much knowledge and they, they need to be encouraged to keep involved, not sort of pushed away and like get out of our way and let us do our job. So, okay. So I want to talk about staff. And when staff working with people with disabilities, they need proper training. They need proper support and they need proper supervision. They need regular meetings, including staff meetings at sites. And they should be mandatory. It's important that all staff have the same information and the same discussions about medication, circumstances, changes in routines. Staff also need to learn to listen to families. This should be included in every bit of training that they receive. People with disabilities and their families should be involved in interviewing staff. When Daniel first went into care in the early days at Hayward Avenue, there was a pilot project which trained families of people living in IDSC accommodation to interview staff professionally. I was involved in that training and for many years I was involved in interviewing staff. Staff who worked with Daniel, but not just at his house, for other roles such as case managers and therapists. I also want to talk about the community visitor scheme. The South Australian Community Visitor Scheme needs to be strengthened and funded appropriately. And I identify here that at the moment, I am, I'm on hold as a community visitor because I see this as a bit of a conflict of interest me being involved in this. But I think visitors need to do regu- regular, scheduled and unscheduled visits to all accommodation services and not just the government services, the NGOs as well. The programme should be expanded to include day options and people living in their home, own homes, particularly people deemed as vulnerable. We would welcome a community visitor into our house to see what we're doing, to see, make sure that we're.
Wanted to, to ask you that. Were you here when Mr Brokman gave some evidence yesterday about the community visitor scheme? And he was asked about an opt-in option for people who live in their family homes or live by themselves?
And that was identified by the Anne-Marie Smith task.
And what, what would, what would your view be about community visitors coming into your home?
Absolutely. I would welcome community visitors into my home. And I think that visitors need to. People who are vulnerable need to be identified. I mean, Daniel's vulnerable. He has us. I'm his mum. He has his stepdad Graham and he has, he has his twin brothers and his sister and that extended family. But we're his family. He doesn't really have anyone else. So I'm welcome.
Yeah, he's not going to a day program at the moment?
No, we actually chose to take him out of day program.
And you haven't sought to find some employment for him as an artist or a singer?
That's certainly, that's certainly on the cards, because you may, you've seen that today I gave you a coaster that Daniel has made. Yes. And you know, it is something that we would like to encourage in the future. But right now, we, I have basically written a day program for him, which includes a picnic day. It includes a day. Everything is out in the community though, where he is visible. Where people see him on a daily basis. He goes to a gym once a week. And so those people in the gym know him. And you know, he goes in the pool in the gym. So he would be in fairly, you know.
I think he's got a strong view about whether you go in the pool with him as well, does he not?
So I have to say, and this is probably deviating a little bit, but I took Daniel to the pool the other day. And he has one support worker that goes with him every now and then and I do the rest of it. And the other support worker, Joe, who he really likes, goes in the pool with him and the, and the exercise physiologist. But last week, I said to him, Daniel, mum come in the pool or mum stay out? And he said, mum stay out. And I thought, hello, I'm at the pool now and I've got my bathers on, so you know. And he went to walk down the steps and he, I went to walk in after him and he turned around and he looked at me and he said, mum stay out. And I was so proud of him that he can make a decision and he can actually say that that's what he wants. I was, I mean, I was a bit annoyed that he didn't want me in there, but I was so proud of him for making that decision.
And in that sense, and I know we're talking about community visitors here, but that sense of ensuring that Daniel has that involvement with a broader community, so not just with you and Graham, but that he's got people around him.
He's got the exercise physiologist. On the Friday after he goes there, there's a cafe near there that we always take him to. And they all say, hi, Daniel, when he comes in, they all know him. So I believe that, you know, he's being seen by an exercise physiologist in his bathers. And so if there was anything inappropriate, I'm pretty sure the exercise physiologist would identify it. And I think, you know, so for me, the farm where he went was really good for a period of time, but now he needs to be. That's a very segregated setting. So he needs to be in the community more and he needs to be very visible in the community. The people at Cleland Wildlife Park, which is in the Adelaide Hills, they know him. He can go to Cleland and they know what he likes for his lunch. So he can walk up to the Cleland Wildlife Park counter with his card, with his debit card. And they say to him, would you like chips, Daniel? And he says, yes, please. And he can pay for them with his card.
So part of it, you, you wanted to tell the Royal Commission about just building that independence for, for Daniel. And your hope for him in the future is to have a life in the community where he can be independent and have choice and control, is that right?
Yes, and we've made, we are making, we're in the process of making provisions that our home at North Haven, he will stay in. Even after Graham, if Graham and I become too old or can't look after him anymore. The other children are all very happy for this, that Daniel will stay in this house. But it will be done properly and it will be legally done so that he has, he can stay in that house until the day he dies.
Right, now I've diverted you off community visitors.
Yeah, sorry.
That, that you wanted to express your views about the community visitor scheme. And you say at the end of paragraph one hundred and seventeen, principal community visitor role needs to be permanently filled as a matter of urgency. So you've got a strong view about that, is that right?
A strong view about that. And the principal community visitor scheme, the principal community visitor role was filled on Friday. Was appointed on Friday. That principal community visitor is also the, the public advocate, so.
Right, and there was some news release over the weekend about having a system of apps. And obviously that is news that postates your statement. But you read that article in the Sunday Mail on Sunday, a couple of days ago, about an app system. And based on your experience with Daniel and your experience in the sector, how's the app going to work? Or what do you think might be the experience of people with disability using the app?
Well, you saw me shortly after I had seen about the app and I was angered. I was, I mean, the government has put in half a million dollars towards developing this app that people in their homes, a visitor can visit them through an app. Daniel has no concept of an app. He has no concept. His, his understanding of my phone is it's something he can watch Sale of the Century and Scooby Doo on. He, he has no comprehension of an app and I would be concerned for people in supported accommodation who were given an app, who had, who were not able to use that app by themselves. And they were given an app, they'd have a staff member with them. So what opportunity does that provide for them to give honest feedback? And if they can even use an app, if they're even verbal.
So at this stage, what you know about the app is what you read in the newspaper. So we may ask some questions during the course of the week about that.
Yes. Absolutely, yes.
Right, the final topic you wanted to raise was security cameras. And this you wanted to raise because of not getting any sort of clear answer in terms of how Daniel might have sustained the injury and the very large bruising.
Yep.
And what would you like to tell the Royal Commission about the security cameras? You've set that out at paragraph 118.
Yeah.
This is the final topic that Ms. Rogers wants to cover. And then I'll hand back to the commissioners if you have any questions.
When I first became involved in the disability sector, there were many discussions about dignity of risk versus duty of care. But now I just see this as dignity versus safety. If, if it is between people seeing Daniel naked or seeing Daniel being safe in these places and places being accountable, there is no choice. Cameras should be introduced, particularly in common areas. However, if there is concern identified, there should be an option to place cameras in the private areas such as bedrooms, if there is concerns identified. And I think that should be done like with full discussions with families or the person with the disability, if they are able to agree to that. But if families have concerns about what's happening with their child or their son or their daughter or their sister or brother or niece or nephew, there should be an option that something can be, you know, there must be some way of recording if there is, if there are concerns about someone's safety.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Chair, I understand that none of the parties with leave have any questions of Ms. Rogers. So the commissioners may have some questions.
Yes, thank you very much. Ms. Rogers, I'll just ask first Commissioner Bennett whether she has any questions to put to you.
Firstly, thank you very much for coming today and telling us what's happened to Daniel and the impact that it's had on Daniel and you. In relation to the security camera issue, wouldn't it be better that the systems that, that nature of where people live, that the skills and aptitude, the culture and the governance were the protections? And things like community visitors, wouldn't, wouldn't that remove any debate about needing, if we can get those things right?
Absolutely, but they're not right at the moment. The, as Mitchell's family said yesterday, in some of these places, the atmosphere is toxic. And people are not, people are not safe at the moment. So, you know, I mean, ideally what you're saying would be ideal. I wouldn't want to have a camera watching me, you know. But if, like if, as in aged care settings, some people are putting hidden cameras in and they're finding things that they don't want to see, but they're finding them. And I mean, it's clear that not everyone is safe in accommodation services. If what you're saying, if everything was, if everyone was accountable and things were happy and people were happy and the community visitors could go in as they, as they do in other states. In South Australia, we, our South Australian government doesn't allow them to go into non-government organizations, although those, that has been amended in other states. But we, if those things were all in place and managers were, you know, accountable and senior managers knew what was going on in the services, absolutely, I absolutely 100% agree with you, it would be far better if we didn't have to do that.
So that should be our aim?
Absolutely.
Rather than institutional settings that become more institutional by having cameras?
I agree, and I can guarantee you that Daniel will never go into another institutional setting because group homes are mini institutions, whether we like it or not. You know, I mean, when he went there, we were in a difficult situation. And I don't know what we would do had we our time over again. I think I probably would have done it differently, having the knowledge that I have now. But at the time, we were limited as to what was available to us. And, you know, I mean, our ultimate goal should be that people are safe.
I have one last question, Chair. If it's, you said that Daniel went into a residential living arrangement when he was about 11, when you were expecting your twins. Had Daniel participated in school during that time? And was that continued when he left living with you?
Yes, yes, he had been in school. He was regularly suspended from school because he was a bit of a terror. And, but no, yes, that did continue once he went into accommodation services, yes.
And how long did he continue education for?
Until he was 18. He wasn't, I mean, it wasn't what I would call a great education. As I said, he was regularly suspended and, but he, he did continue attending school, should we say. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner McEwen, do you have a question?
No, thank you. Other than to say, thank you very much, Ms. Rogers, for coming today.
Thank you.
Ms. Rogers, just to follow up what Commissioner Bennett asked, what kind of school was it? We don't need to know the name, but what kind of school?
He did attend a special school. I think that even now in this day and age, I think he would struggle to attend mainstream school. He wasn't toilet trained until he was quite a lot, well, into his teens. And for want of a better word, he was into natural art. He did a bit of artwork with his, with his bodily functions. And that would not go down well in a classroom. He also regularly bit people. And it's only in the last few, it's only since Daniel came home that, and I've been involved in more recent times in the incident reports and the problems when Daniel has bitten, that I've worked out, I've actually worked out why he bites. And he bites because people are screaming around him. And I'm, I'm not sure if, and I don't want to be flippant, it sounds a bit flippant, but I'm not sure if he, if he thinks that the noise bothers him or if he thinks I'll give you something to scream about. So he's, he's a bit of a terror. And, and as I said, he still bites. But, you know, I'm very thankful to say that he doesn't bite me anymore.
The special school you refer to is one run by the state, is it?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Well, thank you very much for coming to the Commission to give your evidence. In particular, thank you for preparing that video, which we have seen earlier today. And that video reflects fairly obviously the love and caring you have for Daniel. And we're grateful for you being prepared to do that for the Commission and for people who are following our work. And also I want to say thank you for how clear and thoughtful and fair your evidence has been. We thank you for that. We appreciate your contribution to the Royal Commission. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Chair, that concludes Ms. Rogers' evidence. We thought if it was convenient to the commissioners that we have a break for lunch now and then we'll return after lunch. And Ms. Elizabeth Bennett, who is in Melbourne and on the video link, will take the witnesses for this afternoon's session.
So we shall resume then at 1:30 Adelaide time?
I'll just double check with those instructing me. Yes, that's fine, thank you. 1:30.
We'll resume, we'll resume at 1:30, thank you.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. Commission is resumed.
All right, I think we're, Chair, we're just waiting to see if we've got sound from you.
Yeah.
All right. The next witness will be Mr. Cunningham. Before he gives his evidence, Commissioners, I want to tender some documents into evidence.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Eastman. We didn't actually hear that everybody was ready, but now we're on screen, all is well. Yes, thank you.
So Commissioners, there are two documents or a video and a photograph, but I'll call them documents from Ms. Rogers' evidence that it may be appropriate to tender into evidence now. The first is the, what I might call Daniel Rogers' video. You might remember the four-minute video. Could that be tendered and marked exhibit 14.2?
Yes, that will be done, thank you.
Then there is the photograph, which is in the hearing bundle part A behind tab 13. And if that photograph could be tendered into evidence for this case study and marked 14.3.
Now that's, just to be clear about it, the one behind tab 13?
Yes, that's right.
And that's the only photograph that you wish to tender?
For today, as I said earlier, we'll, we'll ask you to make some directions at the end of the hearing about the tender of material generally. But with respect to those two documents, that they're tendered now.
Yes, thank you. Those two documents then will be admitted into evidence and bear the exhibit numbers to which Ms. Eastman will refer.
And Commissioners, Mr. Cunningham is in the hearing room here in Adelaide. And Ms. Bennett will take his evidence via the video link.
Thank you. Mr. Cunningham, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give evidence. If you would be so good as to follow the instructions of the associate in the room you were in, then she will administer the affirmation to you.
No, thank you.
I will read you the affirmation. At the end, please say yes or I do. Do you solemnly and sincerely declare and affirm that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Now, Ms. Bennett, who is in Melbourne actually, will ask you some questions. And just so you're aware of where everybody is, you probably already are, Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner McEwen are in the hearing room in Adelaide, wherever we are, Adelaide. And I happen to be in Sydney, but no doubt I'm appearing like a brooding omnipresence in the sky on the screen. Yes, Ms. Bennett?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Cunningham, can you tell the commissioners your full name?
Wayne Francis Robert Cunningham.
Now, Mr. Cunningham, you've made two statements for this Royal Commission. The first dated 14 May 2021 and the second dated 24 May 2021, is that right?
I'm sorry, the message was very garbled and I couldn't understand what you said.
I'm sorry, I understand you've made two statements to this Royal Commission, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
One is dated 14 May 2021 and the other is 24 May 2021, is that right?
Yes, correct.
Sorry, can I just, Ms. Bennett, your sound is not ideal. We're only hearing every second word.
It's also breaking up in Sydney a little.
I'm very sorry, I've got a technical person present with me in the room who will try to assist. I'll try again, is that any better, Commissioner?
Too soon to tell.
All right, I'll, I'll assist. Commissioners, the statements of Mr. Cunningham are at tabs one and two of hearing bundle B. Mr. Cunningham, have you read those statements recently?
Yes, I have.
Thank you. And read together, noting that the second corrects some matters in the first, read together, are you content that those statements are true?
Yes, I am, yes, they're true.
Thank you. I tender those statements, Commissioner.
Do we need to give them a, an exhibit number?
Sorry, Commissioner, as I said earlier, we'll deal with the tender of all of the documents after the conclusion of the hearing.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Cunningham, have you started working in the disability sector in around 1989, is that right?
Yes, 1988 actually, 4th of March.
Thank you, and what was your role? Thank you. And what was your role in the 4th of March 1998?
I was, I started at Strathmont Centre as a home assistant.
And then you worked as a disability services officer between 1995 and 2008, is that right?
That's correct.
And, and what, what did that role involve, Mr. Cunningham?
The direct care and support of people in institutionalized care.
See. And what's your current role?
I'm the Playford area manager within accommodation services.
And who do you report to?
I report to Mr. Mark Perry, Assistant Director.
See? And who does Mr. Perry report to?
Mrs. Muriel Kirkby, Director, Accommodation Services.
Thank you. And without naming people, Mr. Cunningham, can you tell me what is the, the job which reports to you in your role?
I have two team leaders. And under them sit team supervisors, approximately, I want to do five, six each. And under them sit the disability services officers who are supported and mentored by the team supervisor.
Okay, so is it, in a supported accommodation environment, it's the disability support officers who live on-site with the people that are being supported?
Yes, they work in the, in the client's homes, yes, in the people's homes.
I see. And where are the team supervisors located?
They work either are based in the home, depending on the size of the group home, or they're a float supervisor and start and finish their day in a particular group home. But they're, supervisors are out in the houses every day.
Yes, and the team leaders, where are they based?
In our local office at Salisbury.
And how often do they visit the houses that they're responsible for?
They're required to visit each of their accommodation sites monthly, but I would say visit more frequently than that.
All right. Now, I want to take you back until the end of 2018 for a moment. Now, we're speaking about one of the houses that you were responsible for as N Street. You're aware of the house that I'm talking about when I say N Street? Yes. And N Street?
Ms. Bennett, I'm sorry to interrupt. You've been asking questions of Mr. Cunningham about the current situation in terms of organization. Are we clear that the same arrangements applied at the time you're now asking?
No, I'm, I'm just about, that's right. So in October 2018 was the structure what we have just discussed. There were disability support officers living in the house, is that right?
At the time, yes, there was accommodations, disability services officers in the group homes, yes.
And did they report to team supervisors?
No, they reported to a shift supervisor.
Yes. And was that shift supervisor present in the house?
No, not in all houses in, at that time in my area. There was only one onsite supervisor. The rest of the accommodation sites were supported by what we call a float shift supervisor.
I see. And what about N Street? Did that have a shift supervisor or a float?
A float supervisor.
See. And across how many houses did that supervisor float?
Um, hmm, four to five. I can't give you without looking at the list, but they had several sites they supported.
And that shift supervisor in 2018, the last, latter part of 2018, reported to team leaders, is that right?
No, reported to an accommodation services manager, which, which I was at that time.
I see. And where were the accommodation service managers based at the end of 2018?
We were office-based, as well were the float supervisors. They would start their day and finish their day at our office at 75 Port Road, Cheltenham.
And was N Street one of the houses within your portfolio at the end of 2018?
Yes, it was.
And how often did you get to N Street while you were the accommodation services manager?
I would say semi-regularly. I would go there to attend house meetings. I would, if there was any care concerns, if there was a problem that couldn't be resolved at a local level with the supervisor, they would then involve me. they would then involve me and I would attend.
What do you mean by a house meeting?
We used to have quarterly teams meetings, where all the staff would get together. It wasn't compulsory, so some meetings were well-attended and others weren't so well-attended. And we would generally have them at the house, or if there was training involved, we might have them at the Port Road office.
Were those meetings well-attended at the end of 2018 at N Street? Do you remember?
No, they probably weren't. It was a hard site to have staff attend meetings.
Can you tell the Commissioners why you think it was a hard site to have people attend meetings?
Because of the roster. It was a roster that had active-passive night duty, who would work until nine in the morning. And they would support the 12-hour-day person, who worked from 7:00 AM to 19:10 or 19:20. And we have an afternoon person who would start at two in the afternoon and work till 10 at night to support the night staff. But their first job was to go and do the day programme run. So they would leave at two o'clock and go and do the, you know, picking up the men from their day options.
All right, I just want to unpack that for a moment, because was there a handover period where the night staff would have the opportunity to speak for a moment with the day staff who were taking over?
Yes, there was a handover in the morning, so the passive-night staff would work till, I think it was nine o'clock, eight-thirty to nine, I'm pretty sure it was nine o'clock, because they would get the boys or the men ready for their day programmes, and the day person would take them. And when they would come back, that's when the night staff would leave. If there was someone who didn't go to a day option, not everyone went to day options five days a week. So quite often there would be someone, so there had to be a staff member back at the house. But they had that couple of hours in the morning, seven till nine, where they could have a handover. And the night supervisor would also do a report that would go to the day supervisor. So any issues that were raised by night staff were addressed that way as well.
Okay. So was that a formal requirement, or was it just a cultural adaptation that those handovers would occur?
No, it was a requirement. Every accommodation site, we have a handover of staff from one section to another. There were certain things that would be required to be undertaken at a handover. So if you had DDA drugs that need counting, that counting would occur. There was handing over of the money in the safe. And, you know, clients' health concerns were discussed, the bowel management support plans were discussed. So people needed suppositories that day or that evening, that was where things like that occurred. So there was a complete handover.
Okay. So what was it about that house that made it difficult to get people together for a quarterly team meeting then?
Was the roster. So the night staff, because they would work 1900 to eight-thirty, nine o'clock in the morning shift, they wanted to go home, so they'd want to stay back for a meeting. The part-time staff, we found it hard to get them to come in early. We offered, we would pay them, try and incentivise them to attend. But, yeah, they often had appointments themselves during the day. So when we did call a meeting, we had a set date, so we had a calendar of dates, and we encouraged people to participate. But, yeah, it was, I couldn't force people to attend.
I see. And there's no scope for additional support to facilitate those meetings?
We would, sometimes we could bring in extra staffing, and that's what I would negotiate with my area manager at the time, if that was possible. Sometimes, depending on what needed to be discussing, it was possible, but still then I couldn't get full attendance. There was only probably a couple of meetings in the years I oversaw that team that was able to get full attendance.
Was that unusual for that house? I'm sorry, let me rephrase that. Was that unusual when compared with other houses?
No, not really. I was just thinking about my other accommodation sites that I managed at the time. It was always a struggle to have, because it was two defined sections, Section 1 and Section 2. So in their calendar, we would rotate what section the meeting would be held, so that everyone, you know, was involved in a meeting at some point. So it wasn't all on Section 1, so if Section 2 staff didn't attend, they never got to be involved in the meeting, that didn't occur. We would have the meetings rotating, so they were on both sections. So over the course of a year, hopefully everyone got involved in meetings.
All right. Mr Cunningham, do you remember if you ever met Daniel at N Street?
Yes, I knew Daniel very well.
Yes, can you tell us about Daniel?
I found him to be a lovely man. He reminded me a lot of my nephew, who functionally is very similar to Daniel. So I had a great warmth for him, as did I have for all the men who lived in [BLEEP] N Street sites.
And how was your relationship with his family?
Very good. I had a good relationship with Karen, and she could easily talk to me, and I found her very easy to talk to. She was very understanding. Being a manager, we were both the same classification at that time. Her working in Cara as an accommodation manager, and me as an accommodation services manager within accommodation services.
See. Now, did you hear her evidence earlier today?
Yes, I did.
You would have heard Karen speak about an incident that happened in late 2016, where staff didn't properly pack Daniel's clothes and medication for his holiday. Did you hear her speak about that?
Yes, I did.
Yes. Can you tell the Royal Commissioners how you felt about that incident when it happened?
I was embarrassed. Karen had met with me and provided a list, which was emailed to me. I personally took it out to the site and entered it into the diary, and it was also placed on the notice board. The shift supervisor was also advised. And it was communicated on multiple ways for the staff to prepare his holiday bag and ensure he had his medication, et cetera.
And as I understand your evidence, after Ms Rogers made her complaint, you spoke at the house meeting about that issue, is that right?
Yes, I spoke at the house meeting and with the individual staff and supervisors involved.
And what did you tell them, do you remember?
That it was unacceptable, that there had to be change, that staff had to take responsibility for their actions and ensure clients and families were supported. I was very disappointed in them.
All right. Another incident?
Sorry, what did they tell you?
They acknowledged they dropped the ball, and they were very remorseful about the situation. The staff involved were experienced staff, who genuinely cared for Daniel and wanted him to have a successful holiday. And I think everyone at the time, the staff, thought each other were doing the work that was required. And obviously, no one was doing it.
And did you report back to Daniel's family about what you found out about what had happened?
Yes, I believe I gave feedback around the fact that the staff were, I've apologised, and the staff were remorseful about that happening to Daniel and ruining his holiday.
We heard about an incident around the purchase of St Bedlin in October 2018. And is that a complaint that also concerned you?
Yes, it did concern me.
Yeah. Can you tell us what, tell the Royal Commissioners what it was that concerned you about that the most?
The lies told to the family by the staff involved, and the fact that Daniel was excluded from that process. We promote with the clients, staff-involved clients in the purchase of their life, not a hotel model where everyone just stays to the side and staff do everything. You know, I would expect Daniel to be involved in his life and have active participation in decision-making around his purchases, his items.
And is it fair that for this model to work, there needs to be open and transparent communication between the people working in the home and the family?
Most definitely, yes.
And with Daniel?
Yes.
I wanted to understand about how Daniel's money was accessed. Do you know, as I understand it, there was cash on the premises belonging to Daniel. Is that your understanding?
Yes, that's correct.
And it was about just over $250 on premises, is that right?
Yeah, there probably would have been a bit more than that. It was approaching his birthday, so the staff would have requested through their supervisor, extra money from Client Trust, so they could buy birthday presents and other things he needed.
So who was responsible within the house for Daniel's money?
Well, it was a shared responsibility. The only given shift, the staff on duty were responsible for accounting the money and signing it over. They would need to have conversation with either the family, or the supervisor, or myself. Some, a couple of the men at N Street were under guardianship, under the public advocate, so their spending would have been delegated to me to monitor on their behalf. So, but in this case, you know, Daniel's family had oversight of that, and should have been consulted.
You said, Mr Cunningham, that the staff at N Street in 2016 were experienced and remorseful about what had happened then?
Yes.
Now, talking about 2018, was this the same, was this the same group of staff members, or had it changed?
No, it had changed. We did rotate staff, and we, staff did move. I tried to have stability and not move people for a couple of years. But I generally would rotate staff, encourage staff to move around the service, and learning how to support people with different types of disabilities. And also, I did want a culture where staff took ownership. So I did encourage staff movement. That was always drummed in me in Strathmont Centre. We were moved within the villas, and then within the villa, and then to other villas. So there wasn't that ownership issue, and I tried to maintain that.
Yes, thank you.
So as at late 2018, was anyone identified as the custodian of Daniel's money?
It was an informal arrangement with Karen. So money did sit with Client Trust, and money came down. And if staff would, I expect, would have a conversation with Karen and Daniel about purchases, or that might suggest a purchase. And then the staff would then go and take Daniel and make that purchase. Or it could be that Karen would want some information on, you know, the balance or something, that could be provided.
So how did money get from Daniel's bank account to the house?
It was delivered by courier, and money would come down for all the clients at once. Then it would be counted by admin staff, and then dispersed to the three teams in Cheltenham. And the supervisors would then count that money again before staff and the clients attended to the office to collect the money where they would sign for it.
And were you aware of any limits on the amount of money that could be held on behalf of Daniel at the house?
We did strive to have a limit of $250, but that limit would go above that if they were buying for, say, like at Christmas time, we would order four weeks' money in advance, because the Client Trust would close over Christmas. Or around, you know, the public holidays, if they had to do, we had a specific day of delivery. So if that fooled in a week where it was a public holiday, we generally would do a double order or a triple order, depending, especially over Christmas, it would be a four-week order.
Are these informal arrangements common, in your experience?
Oh, yes, yes.
So you understand it's reasonably common that where there are no guardianship orders in place, the funds are managed by DHS?
Yes, they would be managed at a local level, and there would be oversight by the audit team.
I see. All right. I wanted to move on to ask you about, a little bit later, in October of 2018. And I wanted to show you a document at Hearing Bundle B, Tab 71. Now, this is an incident report from October 2018. And I'd just like it if you could tell the Royal Commissioners what this document is.
Okay. That is a risk man incident report?
All right. Now, can you tell me, as at the end of 2018, were risk man reports, how were they completed? Were they done via an online form or by telephone?
The support staff would ring and enter the report that way, by telephone, to an operator.
Okay, so the operator would go through all of the fields with the reporter, is that right?
Correct, yes.
And the reporter would usually be the officer who works with, for example, Daniel?
Correct. It would be, the support worker generally would be the one who would ring and make the risk man report, yes, that's correct.
And now, who would see that report, once it was entered?
It would be the shift supervisor, depending on the severity, myself, the area manager, the regional manager, director, all the way.
When you say depending on the severity, perhaps the operator could show us the second half of that page? And a bit further down?
Which page do you want there, several?
I'm sorry, it's at the top of the second page in this one. The first word there is severity on the left-hand side. Do you see that?
Yes, it has insignificant.
Yes. So who would see a report that has an insignificant rating?
From memory, I don't believe it would have gone any higher than an area manager. So myself and my area manager would have received this risk man.
Okay. And what would you do with it?
That would be, would ensure that the shift supervisor investigated and completed a remedial action plan as to fix the problem, depending on what the situation was. Or if it was a client injury, to make sure that the client involved got the necessary treatment. The supervisor would upload the report from the ambulance, any hospital discharge summary, statements from staff, et cetera, would all be added to that document.
Now, the severity label determines the level of escalation of that report. That's fair, isn't it?
Correct, yes.
And the person who enters the severity is the person who has most often witnessed the incident, or first noticed the incident, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Did you ever observe any difficulties with reports downplaying an incident?
At times, yes. And it was in my delegation to change that severity rating, which I would do.
Okay. Can you give us an example of under-reporting that you're aware of? I don't want specifics, but what sort of issues did you observe? Or perhaps I can rephrase that. Did you observe any such issues at N Street in 2018?
Not for N Street, no, I didn't. They were very good at reporting incidences. That was not a concern with that site. I guess staff conflict would probably be the main one, that would be under-reported. Any client-related issues were... Um, any client-related issues were scrutinized and um we would um change that delegate, the severity level if required, especially if.
But how would you, Mr Cunningham, i- if the designation of the severity of an incident is the responsibility of the person who was there at the time, assuming there was such a person?
Yes.
How, how would you get a sense of whether that person was deliberately underplaying the significance of an injury?
I, I wouldn't be able to, but I would look at um the nature of the injury, so if involved, um and if it involved a physical injury that resulted in um external medical care being required, like an ambulance been called for an assessment, I would change it to moderate or to severe. So um, and that would increase the escalation, so like the community nurses would be informed, et cetera. So there was increased um involvement, more eyes on the incident.
But you would need something, as it were, external and objective to change the assessment of the person responsible for reporting in the first instance?
Um, I, I was capable of making that decision, I could look at an incident and my experience told me that severity rating was insufficient, there was no.
But your experience wouldn't all, I'm not putting this as a criticism, but your experience wouldn't necessarily allow you to do that, for example, if a worker deliberately downplayed the significance of bruising and chose not to call a doctor precisely because that person wanted to downplay the significance of the incident, it would be pretty difficult for you to determine otherwise.
Um, this following staff member, if they had any concerns, would probably do a, a new risk man, we are, we'd often have multiple risk mans for the one injury, and I think that's where um that would be made clear. That, um, so we would never discourage anyone from making a report, so if someone come in and, and saw a bruise or um a client looked unwell, they would report it and escalate it, so we never discouraged staff from reporting. It was always encouraged.
All right, well, let's, let's look at an example of uh risk man from February twenty nineteen.
Yes.
Um, I'll ask the operator bring up a, a document that I, I think identifies N Street, so perhaps um discretion might be required. It's at um Hearing Book B, Tab sixty-seven, the document ID S A G dot zero 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 two dot zero zero seven dot two zero three six. Now, this is um from eighteenth February two thousand and nineteen.
Yes.
Um, now, you heard some evidence about um this incident this morning, I think, from Daniel's mother.
Yes.
Now, you'll note uh at the summary, it says staff was showering client when he noticed two bruises on left side of his bottom. Staff went to the previous notes and was an entry from the overnight staff stating of the bruises.
Mm-hmm.
So do I understand from that, that the bruising was noticed the day before or by the last shift?
Yes.
Not recorded in risk man, is, is that fair?
That's correct, yes, that's a fair statement.
Okay, and can you un, can you explain to the Commissioners why it wouldn't have been recorded in risk man?
Um, no, I can't explain why that staff member um at the time uh did not report it appropriately. My memory says that he asked the day staff to do it on his behalf and that's what that employee did. That's my recollection that he um, he got the, as part of his handover, he advised the staff.
Okay, um, you'd agree with me though that the notes here suggest that the staff noticed the bruise and then went to the notes?
Correct, yes, I understand that, yes.
And it, y- you're not able to say whether it happened one way or the other, is that right?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I, I did investigate it at the time and this, from um memory, the start of the night, staff member um had, had asked um the, the day staff to do it on their behalf, to submit the, the um risk man form.
All right, so can you uh explain why it wouldn't have been done at the time?
Um, no, I can't, it, it's, it's not common practice and um that staff member was spoken about, you see it, you report it.
Okay, um, so what criteria would it, so, so at first instance, it was not reported on risk man at all?
Correct.
The next time the bruise was observed, it was categorized as insignificant, is that fair?
Correct, yes.
Can you, you would have then reviewed this report, is that right?
Yes, I did.
And what did you do to consider whether or not the insignificant rating was correct or not?
I asked the supervisor to investigate and provide me with feedback and um, yeah, to investigate the incident. Because it was reported as a small bruise.
Ask anyone, did you ask anyone to look at the bruise?
The supervisor, yes, to investigate it and um provide me with um information.
And do you know when the supervisor did that?
Um, I, I think there's a journal entry attached to this document that's my, I think it was the twentieth, I was able to review it. I'm not sure of the date.
All right, um.
Ms Bennet, I just wanted to be clear that I, I'm following. Is, is this a report of the bruising, the more extensive bruising that we saw in a photograph?
No, Chair, I'm coming to that one next.
All right, okay.
The day before, uh, and perhaps, Mr Cunningham, we can just explain, this is the eighteenth of February two thousand and nineteen. And I would be grateful for your clarification about this. As I understand, there was these bruises observed on the eighteenth of February. And then perhaps the witness could be shown um Tab seventy-two at Hearing Bundle B, which is S A G dot zero 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 two dot zero 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 seven dot two zero three eight, which again will have um the N Street identifier. Um, now, that, as I understand it, refers to um at the summary, if we could go to the summary part. Um, it says, staff was giving client a shower, noticed he had a medium-sized bruise on the right bottom and the colour of the bruise is pink, do you see that?
Yes, I do.
Now, did that incident report make it to you?
Um, I, I, but I, it, it would have done, yes, it would have, I would have received an email notification.
Do you remember if you reviewed it at around the time you received that notification?
Um, I want to s- g- yes, I believe I did, um my journal entry, if there's an attachment, that um, that would confirm, um I would have made an entry.
All right, um, now, was there any concern for you about a pattern between the eighteenth of February and now the twenty-first of February having bruises?
Um, it would have raised um alarm bells and I would have spoken to the supervisor around um the cause. Um, as I said, you know, we encourage bruising, uh, bruising, sorry, we encourage reporting of bruises or any incidences um related, so um my understanding of this incident was um another staff member noting the bruise and reporting it.
All right, now, this is ultimately the bruising, as I understand it, that led to the hospital admission, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Okay, now, the Commissioners saw photographs of that this morning?
Yes.
And you've seen photographs of that bruising?
Yes.
Earlier as well as today, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Now, you'll notice in this risk man report that we're looking at, the severity is again identified as insignificant, do you see that?
Yes, I do, yes.
Now, that rating has been there the whole time, as I understand it, it was never changed, is that right?
Um, it, that would be correct, yes.
So subsequent review didn't change the, the, the severity rating from insignificant to anything more serious?
Um, that would because it, it, the, the incident escalated very quickly and um uh, I can't explain why I didn't change that report, but it did not change the um escalation. So it was still escalated.
And as I understand, just having now today seen the photographs that you've seen and having seen them in the past, would you say that that was correctly categorized as an insignificant injury?
No, I would have ca- categorized as a major.
Okay, can you tell the Commissioners um why it is that a major injury or a major incident was categorized as insignificant?
Um, I can't explain the actions of the staff, um I, it's, was inappropriately classified.
All right, this.
And would it be also correct that uh the details on this form, which state that staff were giving the client a shower and noticed he had a medium-sized bruise on the right bottom and the colour of the bruise was pink, that that was not an accurate description of the extensive bruising that the client had sustained?
Yes, in hindsight, yes, it was, um, an incorrect reporting.
Hmm.
Now.
It's a little hard, it's a little hard inadvertently, isn't it, to describe the bruising uh that was sustained in the way that is recorded in this document, isn't it?
Yes.
Could it have been deliberately downplayed?
Uh, no, I, well, uh, uh, no- nothing um that came out of the investigation indicated that, um. The, um, I think it was just, um, the bruise came out at different times, it started off very small and seemed to have grown. And I think um staff reported it as they saw it, so I think that's why it's um changed from one small bruise to um medium six, um, medium six bruises, or mediums, I think it's medium size or medium six bruises it's got here. So I think it's, it did increase in size over time and then on the Friday when the staff um called the locum, that's when the full bruise obviously had come out. I don't think there was a deliberate attempt to, to deceive, no.
Was that possibility investigated?
Um, staff were questioned um a- at length, every staff member involved was interviewed by myself um and HR. And um staff were made to undertake the code of um uh ethics training after the interview. They were sat down and um undertake the online training module before they could leave. Um, we fully investigated that and um the HR then compiled all that evidence for um triage.
All right, well, I'd like to really understand how this was categorized as insignificant, so I'd like to take you to Tab eighty-seven of the Hearing Bundle B, and this is a manual, can you, before we talk about that manual, can you tell me, Mr Cunningham, about how you were tra- who trained you in the use of risk man?
Um, there was no formal training, um I, I do know of this document and um.
Sorry, so we're going to stay with the first question first, sorry, I, I don't mean to confuse, but, but you say there was no formal training, what informal training did you receive?
Um, it would have been um just worked through, walked through the process, um would have been um like a dummy incident um for investigating, um I've, uh, there was no formal training around um entering in risk man, it was done over the phone. And but um as a supervisor and as um an ASM, I, it was on the job alert, I guess would be the way to categorize it.
And by two thousand and nineteen, were incidents still being reported over the phone or were they now being entered directly?
Uh, no, they were still en- um entered over the phone.
I see.
Staff could do, supervisors could do one on um, uh, electronic copy, but um, and some supervisors did do that. Um, but most um support worker staff um used the phone to make um their risk man reports.
Is there any way to know whether the reports we've been looking at were made over the phone or by direct entry?
No, I, n- I know, but I would, um, knowing the staff, they would have used the phone.
Okay, that was the practice at the time in early two thousand and nineteen at N Street?
Yes.
All right, and did anyone speak to the phone operators about the way in which they took information down?
Um, I think over the time there was um issues with um uh communicating um with English as a second language for some of our staff, I think some of the nuances of words were misinterpreted. And um we would then correct that when um did the remedial action. If there's some.
I'm sorry, and?
We would correct it, so when we um reviewed, when the team supervised, sorry, the shift supervisor reviewed or myself, I might change some of the wording in the document because um it was incorrect or they used the wrong term to describe um uh, and the incident, so um uh, they might have put um uh epileptic fit and I would change that to seizure.
Now, I'm sorry, what I meant to ask is, was there any investigation of the phone operators in relation to the incident reports that we've been looking at?
Oh, sorry, no, I, I, I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't have the answer to that question.
Okay.
I didn't.
Can I check, sorry, I'm sorry, Ms Bennet, I just want to check some of the chronology here because there perhaps is some inconsistency or I've misunderstood something. The risk man report we've been looking at states that the incident time was six AM and that the report is received on the same day, the twenty-first of February two thousand and nineteen. In your second statement, paragraph fourteen A, you say, on twenty February two thousand and nineteen, I reviewed the risk man report generated by a support worker, now is that a reference to this or is it a reference to a previous?
It's the previous one day to the eighteenth of February?
Right, you then say on twenty-two February, this is paragraph fourteen B, you received an email from a staff member of the residence advising that bruising had been noticed on Daniel when he was prompted from a shower and that a risk man had been submitted by a night staff. Now, is the risk man document we've been looking at one that was submitted by the night staff?
Correct, yes.
Who was on at six o'clock in the morning or thereabouts?
Yes, that would be A, B, Q.
But you don't get to hear about this till the next day, is that right?
Yes, I, I um, depending on um, uh, received a lot of emails and um I think with the classification that would show on the email header. So um I probably, if I'd been a hire, I probably would have picked it up sooner.
Ms Rogers' statement, paragraph fifty-two, says, on Friday twenty-two February two thousand and nineteen at five fifty-four PM, she received a phone call from a support worker at N Street informing her that uh her son had a, a, a large bruise on his back and that the locum was called. Now, I'm not sure why this is a reference to the twenty-second of February, but were you aware when you got an email, as referred to in fourteen B, that a locum had been called?
Um, I, at that time, um, wasn't an on-call officer, so uh if it was out of hours, um, I would not have been notified, no.
I see.
Until the Monday, I think is when I was made fully aware.
Yes, I see, all right, thank you.
Uh, all right, so if we could have a look at the document on the screen, that's a risk man incident reporting manual for default level users, now am I right in understanding that that captures all users of the risk man system?
Yes, all um like su- support staff, yes, for everyone, yes, that's correct.
Yes, um, were you shown this document as part of any training?
I would have seen it when it was released at compliance, um when we had our compliance updates, um that's when I would have seen that document.
But were you, did you, were you provided with that document as part of any training in risk man?
No.
Okay, can I take you to page ten of that document? Now, if the operator could, thank you, uh, now have you, we, we might need to try and, thank you, the operator is anticipating me. Um, can you see that table reasonably clearly?
Yes, I can.
Have you seen this table before?
Oh, yes, it's um on dis- it was on display in all our group homes.
I see, and what's your understanding of what this table is telling you?
It tells me um the nature of how to classify an incident, whether it be client-related, um, staff or organisation. um, staff or organisational, et cetera. So um, it covers the um, the main type of events that could happen in a, in a group home setting.
All right, now, there are six domains across the top. Do you see that?
Yes.
Only one of those seems to me to relate to clients at all. Is that fair?
Correct, yes.
So the vast bulk of the consideration appears to go to the organisational effect of the incident. Is that fair?
Yes.
Uh, is that a client-centred approach in your view?
Um, well, um, I be- yes, I believe so because it um, addresses um, what could happen to a client. Um, uh, with the, the different injuries that all, um, you know, near miss or um, but also um, financial, um, it also that's for financial loss of the client. Um, I think it adequately um, puts the client um, at the centre. Don't forget our staff, our staff mainly work with the clients. So I would very see reports about human resources, organisational or reputa- I've never seen a, a Riskman for those.
So to be categorised in the client category as insignificant,
Mm-hmm.
it needs to be a near miss or no injury?
Correct.
So how is it that an injury of any kind ends up being categorised as insignificant?
Um, I can't, I mean, I, I, as I said, I disagree with the classification the staff put on it and I would only be surmising, I don't want to, yeah.
Well, would a bruise ever be properly categorised as insignificant?
No, it should be a minor, a minor.
Okay, so how is it that in your reviews that you've told us about having reviewed multiple bruise incident reports, that insignificant was accepted on each occasion?
Um, well, it's, these supervisor uh, did the initial review and should have changed that. Um, in hindsight, if I was to do it again, I would have, have changed it. I think it moved very quickly, that incident and um, became escalated very quickly. So reviewing the Riskman report, um, I, I didn't prioritise. I did, I prioritised the journal entries and um, investigating and meeting with staff and trying to get to the bottom of it. I would do things um, differently now in regards to ensuring that docu- documentation matched the actions I took.
Well, I'm just trying to understand, can we go back to, for example, the October bruising that was also rated as insignificant?
Mm-hmm.
Was that properly rated as insignificant?
The, are we talking now about the arm, the upper arm?
Yes.
Yes. Um, look, that i- in hindsight, um, no, it should have been a minor even though it was deemed um, that it was likely to be um, yeah, the clients, you know, um, so, you know, hurting each other.
Does the way that the injury ma- occurred impact on the categorisation for this purpose?
It should have been re-categorised as minor, yes.
Um, all right, um, can you tell me if you have ever seen uh, the document at tab eighty-six? It's a similar document. Now, this says that it is a Riskman Incident Reporting Manual for manager and risk manager level users?
Yes.
Now, are you a manager level user?
Yes, I am. I would, I have full access to the Riskman system. So I, I can see all the different um, boxes and stuff, yes.
All right, and um, so have you seen this document in the context of your training?
Um, I, I would have only seen it at com- um, at compliance, when we have compliance updates and we, we need to talk about the documents. That's when I would have seen. I haven't used that document.
Okay, do you know if you've read that document before this Royal Commission?
Uh, only, I may have gone through it with my peers when it was first released, but I have not seen it since.
All right. Um, now, returning to the injuries of um, the twenty-second of February, these were ultimately reported in the report of on Riskman at tab sixty-eight in um, the hearing bundle B. Now, this is the report that tells us that the matter has gone to hospital, that the incident has gone to hospital. As I understand it, I'll wait for that document to come up. Thank you. So the, the summary there is summarising the circumstances in which Daniel went to hospital, is that right?
Correct, yes.
So the incident that this reports upon is the admission to hospital, is that right?
You were taken to accident and emergency. I don't believe he was admitted. He um, was treated in accident and emergency and um, discharged. I don't think he spent overnight or go, he did go up to a ward or anything. I believe he, it was all treatment.
I think if you have a look at the last line of the summary under detail, this client was admitted overnight.
Okay.
Of sedations, yes. So that, that report really relates to the admission to hospital, is that right?
Yes.
Yeah, and so over the page, we'll see that that is categorised as a major incident?
Yes.
I think we can agree that, happy with that going over the page, but um, so how does that work? The underlying incidents are identified as insignificant, but the fact of admission to hospital is regarded as major?
Um, I think the staff would, would have reported it as their experience, told them that um, obviously a major event had occurred because it required um, outside agencies to be involved, required him to go to the hospital and receive treatment, assessment and treatment.
Would you agree the focus was really on that hospital admission rather than the injuries in this re- report?
Um, well, I think it was the, the, the support workers aren't medically trained staff, so I think they, what they reported was the events that occurred. He was assessed by a locum and a recommendation to go to the hospital. Um, and with the um, family notified. So, yeah, I think it reflects the incident. I don't um, I mean, the, the investigation would um, uncover or just the full nature of the event. But it was reported as a, a transfer to ho- um, to um, a hospital.
All right, now, um, the matter was then investigated. Can you tell the commissioners about uh, what was involved in that investigation so far as you're aware, just from your experience?
Um, uh, every staff member that worked that whole week in um, uh, End Street was spoken to and formally interviewed by me and my HR business partner. Uh, there was a series of questions that were developed um, and um, put to the staff and um, their responses documented and then they were um, uh, had to undertake that Code of Ethics training online module. And then they were, yeah, so we interviewed them over a period of a few days and that information then was sent on for um, triage.
All right, and what was the conclusion following that investigation? What caused these bruises?
Um, it was not de- determined. Um, staff believed it occurred outside the home, um, but no one could um, come to a determination.
Um, did anyone speak with Daniel Lovellwood as part of that investigation?
Yes, um, we spoke with Daniel, um, the um, I believe the police attempted to speak to Daniel. Uh, but yes, we weren't able to um, get to the bottom of that.
All right, I might ask you to, just a moment.
I think, uh, Mr, Mr Cunningham, you've suggested that, that you were told by staff that the bruising that had been detected at six AM and on Thursday, the twenty-first of February, there, there, that's the day of the week, Thursday, the twenty-first of February, must have by Friday evening, when the locum comes at eight thirty PM, expanded into what we saw in photographs. That, is that what you were told?
Yes, yes, that's what, um, yes.
Did you ask anybody any questions about whether that was in fact the case?
Well, um, I was, yeah, when I was advised of what happened, um, yes, I was, um, I started asking questions to I can't think of specific questions I asked at the time, but yes, it was.
No. It, it's, when one looks at the two immediately relevant documents, that is Riskman twenty-one February, that is the Thursday, six AM, and the Riskman of received on the Monday, but in fact referring to what happened by way of admission to the hospital on Fri- or at least attendance at the hospital on Friday night. When you look at the latter, it says locum attended, client admitted to hospital overnight and the client refuses to return to the property. Staff was advised by the supervisor on Friday night to call the locum out regarding the bruising previously reported over the prior week. As the client's mother was informed and she so showed some concern regarding the injuries. Locum attended at eight thirty PM, recommended the hospital and uh, the client was driven to the hospital. There's nothing in there, is there, about a bruise from six o'clock on the Thursday morphing into extensive bruise?
No, no, the um, I think the staff, when they do their Riskman reports, give a, like a, a brief summary type of thing. Um, some staff, we would always have to um, engaging with our staff and we would promote with the supervisors around giving as much information as possible. Um, to.
Brevity is, bre- bre- brevity is not the same as omitting critical material, is it?
Um, hmm, no.
What I'm getting at is it seems odd that it, there's a reference there to the previous bruising and nobody has suggested that the previous bruising over a day and a half has, has become ex- much, much more extensive?
Hmm, true.
I appreciate you're not a, an investigator and I'm not being particularly critical of you, but I'm just noting that there is something that you would seem, you, one would expect in a report if, if that was the explanation to appear in documentation after all, that was the official record of what was happening.
True, and we do have other um, like case notes and the twenty-four hour report where things were noted. So I think it accumulated to form a picture in the end, but at the time, yes, it, it was um, not reported correctly or sufficiently.
Thank you.
And were, were any medical professionals involved to give an opinion about the development of the injuries or how they might have been caused?
Um, I think because um, it was um, seen initially as a small bruise, it was just the staff just treated locally with the supervisor involved. And I think as it um, became more apparent that um, the injury was greater than first reported, yes, um, you know, medical assistance was sought, et cetera.
I'm sorry, I'll just, to be clear, uh, from the twenty-fifth of February, when the bruises were as they appeared in the photographs, were medical opinions sought about what could have caused such bruising?
Uh, not by myself, um, uh, and uh, the, there was the medical report from um, the hospital, the discharge summary uh, which was seen and um, added to um, the report. But um, of course, uh, Daniel um, stayed with his mum. So I, um, she would have done the follow-up medical appointments and I, um, my team wasn't involved in that.
And similarly, was there um, any consideration about the age of the bruises? Any investigation to the age of the bruises by medical professionals?
Um, not to my knowledge, not that I know of.
All right. Um, I wanted to ask you, I'm, I'm conscious of the time commissioners, but I, I wanted to ask Mr Cunningham whether did you hear Karen Rogers' evidence this morning about the arrangements that were made for ABM to provide support to Daniel?
Yes.
And were you, was it the case that ABM was being uh, bullied by department support workers?
I d- I don't believe that was the case, no.
Okay. Did you receive any reports to that effect?
Uh, no, I did not. Um, the only report, that it was a, a personal reason why he um, uh, withdrew. I encouraged him and um, tr- tried to encourage, because Karen was really keen to have um, ABM support and um, I was, um, I was too. So um, but I, I couldn't make it happen.
And were there reports of bullying by community members or?
Um, only hearsay from um, ABM. He, he was, he was one who spoke to me about it and explained why he couldn't do it. Um, there was no um, suggestion of um, bullying by su- by support workers or peers within the group home. They all just wanted the best for Daniel.
Okay. Um, all right, I, I'm just going to check with my instructors, commissioners, uh, if there are the matters that I need to cover, which uh, we'll just take one moment while I do that. Uh, commissioners, I'm told those are the matters um, uh, this morning, this afternoon. Um, I understand it's around break time. Uh, and if this is a complete.
I'll just, I'll, I'll just, if I might inquire whether Commissioners Bennett or McEwan have any.
Yes, of course.
Uh, can you tell us please whether, as far as you're aware, any legal representatives wish to ask Mr Cunningham some questions? Do you know?
Uh, I can assist there, no.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner McEwan, do you have any questions of Mr Cunningham?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Yes, I do have one question, Mr Cunningham. When you, uh, your evidence, you said that when you met with staff after the incident was reported, the February twenty nineteen?
Yes.
And you said that staff were given a copy of the Accommodation Services Support Staff Guidelines and asked to complete Code of Ethic Awareness Training?
Yes.
That, that's correct, right?
That's correct, yes.
So am I to take it, and then they had to sign a declaration saying that they had read the da- guideline and completed the training?
Yes.
Am I to take it that they had not done any training whatsoever before being employed by you? What did that mean?
Um, it was just a refresher to sh- um, to hold staff accountable because of the, the lack of um, appropriate reporting and, and escalating of the incident. So um, it was um, suggestion made by HR at the time that we get the um, employees to undertake the Code of Ethics training as a refresher.
So the declaration that you're talking about was on a, on the point of a refresher. Would they have done, signed a declaration before committing employment or being employed in the house? Would they have signed declarations that they had done training?
They would have undertaken their mandatory training at the start of their employment. And um, we had compliance training, which I believe was every two years. Um, this was given as a prompt reminder for staff um, of their responsibilities and their obligations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Bennett, do you have any question?
Uh, I'm conscious of time. I want to ask just a few general questions about End Street. Firstly, um, the disability support workers, the floating supervisors, the team leaders and yourself. You are all government employees, is that correct?
There was no team leaders in the structure. I was the equivalent. I was an ASM. And um, uh, the team leader um, in the new structure replaces the ASM. So I was, um, it was myself as the ASM and then I reported to an area manager.
But they were all employees of the department?
Yes, we had no agency staff on.
Um, Karen Rogers gave evidence of other signs of what living in End Street was like. She talked about the personal care of Daniel had deteriorated, that he uh, smelt on many occasions, that his clothes weren't clean and often that they weren't his own clothes. She talked about that the residence itself was dirty, that it hadn't been swept. Um, an unclean sense to it. And she talked about medication mix-ups. Um, an unclean sense to it and she talked about medication mix ups. Um, and, and this is aside from the incidents that we've just been talking about. This is the general living in End Street of her observations. You had disability workers, a floating supervisor. And yourself that visited what you said regularly, on a semi regular basis were the words that you used. Including at least quarterly meetings.
Yes.
Did no one notice that Daniel? Personal care needed more attention, that the residents needed cleaning? Worried about medication mix ups and people's possessions and that. Karen's story gave a general air of neglect and what I'm asking is when there are so many people there. Why is it no one else saw that general air of neglect?
I think it, it was acknowledged and, um, attempts made, um. I know that, um, we had in place, um, a roster of work that had to be done where, um, floors had to be swept. Um, uh, you know, covers, um, were kept, uh, tidy and the clothes in the white wardrobes. Um, the, we, you know, with carpets needed cleaning, we would get them, um, steam cleaned, et cetera. Uh, I know as, um, uh, as the A S M, when I visited. My focus was more on the administrative tasks where the finance books I kept up to date, where the case notes kept up to date. Um, I now as, um, an area manager, when I visit sites, I go into clients' bedrooms, I check the wardrobes. I, 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 I do those more intimate, um, checks than I would have done at that time as. An A S M, I did rely on my supervisors to, um. Have a presence and address those things. Um, in the new structure that we have in place with the supervisors. Working in, um, group homes and the floats not being office based, they're in the houses. That addresses a lot of that, um, uh, poor practice that was happening and I know in my current role. Um, the, the standards are a lot higher, there's a lot greater accountability for the support workers.
You said that you, without criticizing you specifically, but you said you did know Daniel.
Yes.
And did not, you notice, did, do people, did people not notice that he wasn't clean?
No, I, I said every time.
And that the room wasn't clean and that the general living was not a home that we would want to live in?
Um, it was a very large home, um, it, uh. Every time I saw Daniel, he was, you know, either, um, you know, dressed well or he had just come back from day options. Where he went to day options, he was on a farm and he was doing farm labour, farm work. So he was coming back, um, you know, dirty and with mud on his shoes, et cetera, because that's where he was and. He would, soon as he'd come home, he'd change and get into his, have a shower and get into his pyjamas. Um, I, when I visited, I, I never saw anything that really. Gave me cause from concern, I know the staff, um, cared for Daniel, cared for all four men that lived there and were very fond of them. Um, I didn't see anything that would, um, cause me, uh, concern. Um, I think there was, um, you know, when there's male clients and male staff, um, some of the, the. Cleaning probably could be done better, but I do know that they, they did sweep and, um, clean and, um. Wash things and if they needed, um, specialist cleaning to come in, I would then go through the process and get approval for that, like having the. Carpets, um, steam cleaned, et cetera, or having curtains washed.
But you would agree that from Karen's description, that it had, um.
Yes, I would.
An air of neglect?
Yeah, well, yes, it was, it wasn't, um, it wasn't nice hearing what Karen had to say this morning, though.
Thank you.
Does the department still have a policy of rotation of support staff?
Um, I would say it's on an individual area basis. Um, I know I've always worked in areas where the, um, managers do encourage rotation. Um, some staff will really fight that, um, they don't want to move, they build strong connections. And some families don't want staff moved either, so it's an individual basis, but we do try and, um, move staff. Yes.
I appreciate it's a balance, uh, but there are costs of moving staff.
Correct, yes, building up your relationship and especially when it's a single staffed house. It makes it, you know, you don't have that overlap of people.
All right, thank you, Mr Cunningham, for, uh, your statements and for giving evidence, uh, today. We appreciate your assistance to the Royal Commission, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Ms Bennett, is it appropriate to adjourn? It is now two fifty more or less, uh. In Adelaide, so shall we resume at, uh, three ten?
Uh. A- a- as it's convenient to the commission, um.
Do you want, do you want to come back a little earlier, three oh five?
If that's possible, I could, only fifteen minutes would be, um.
Yeah, we shall return, we shall return at three oh five.
Please, Chair.
The Royal Commission is adjourned. The Royal Commission is resumed.
Yes, Ms Bennett.
Thank you, Chair, um, Ms Kirkby, I think appears in the Adelaide Hearing Room to be sworn or affirmed.
Ms Kirkby, thank you very much for coming to the Royal Commission to give, uh, evidence. If you would be good enough to follow the instructions of the associate who is in the room with you, she will administer the oath.
I will read you the oath, at the end, please say yes or I do. Do you swear by almighty God that the evidence which you shall give shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, Ms Kirkby, um, Ms Bennett will now ask you some questions, just to explain. Where we are, Ms Bennett is appearing from Melbourne. I happen to be in Sydney at our Sydney Hearing Room, but you do have two commissioners in the Adelaide Hearing Room with you. Commissioner Bennett and Commissioner McEwan. So we are slightly scattered, but, uh, Ms Bennett will now ask you some questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms Kirkby, can you tell the Royal Commissioners your full name?
My name is Muriel Charlotte Kirkby.
Now you've, uh, made a statement for the Royal Commission, which Commissioners appears behind tab forty nine of bundle B. Ms Kirkby, have you read the contents of that statement recently?
I have.
And are the contents of that statement true?
They are.
Thank you. Now, Ms Kirkby, I'd like to ask you a few questions about, uh, the contents of your statement. But first of all, can you tell the Royal Commissioners, uh, your current role?
I'm the Director of Accommodation Services with the Department for Human Services. With the responsibility of the, um, disability group homes and also aged care facility.
Now, now, Ms Kirkby, I'm just going to ask you to, to slow down the, the timing of your responses. We have interpreters and we also have the added concern around, um, the audio visually. So if I could ask you to slow it down, that would be great.
Apologies, of course.
All right. Uh, so you've held your current role since about August of two thousand eighteen, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, now can you tell me what that role involves? What, what are the core components of that role?
So I'm, as I said, the Director for Accommodation Services. So I have a responsibility for, uh, two hundred and eleven of our group homes. Right across the Adelaide region and also I have group homes that I have a responsibility for in Mount Gambier and also in Kadena. I, as part of my portfolio, have, uh, our Northgate Age Care Facility. Which is a Commonwealth Age Care Facility, um, within the, within the state. I provide, uh, strategic leadership and, uh, direction, um, to the service. And, um, have a responsibility to, uh, five hundred and thirty clients who live within our service. Um, and also, um, the, the staff, so we have in and around, um, fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred staff.
All right, and how many staff are your direct reports, do you know?
Um, direct reports, I have, um, I have my Director of Nursing. I have the Manager of Quality and Safeguarding. I have the Manager for N D I S and Customer Engagement. I have the Assistant Director of Accommodation Services. I have a, um, a manager of, um, of strategic projects and also the last one. Um, I have, um, a manager that looks after our business systems. So six plus an E A.
Thank you. So you were the sole director from the sixth of August two thousand eighteen and before that there were two directors, is that right?
That's correct, so before that there were two directorates, um, one was responsible for. The community group homes as I have described and the other, which was the position I held. Um, was for Highgate Park, which was the last remaining government institution in South Australia and also the aged care facility. Clinical services, including nursing services, um, community nursing.
All right, now I think.
May I ask, are all five hundred and thirty clients, uh, participants in the N D I S?
No, they're not, um, I also have thirty aged care, um, uh, clients in that, in those numbers as well.
So there are about five hundred that are, that are participants in the N D I S?
I also have some people who are in the COS programme, the Continuity of Support Programme. So it, I, I understand I've probably got, there are probably around four hundred and seventy five. Um, N D I S participants.
Thank you.
Uh, now you said that there are two hundred and eleven houses in your portfolio, does that remain the case today?
That's correct.
And how often do you visit those houses?
Uh, very regularly, um, it is part of my practice to, I, I've got one day a month that I actually block out. To go and visit houses across the directorate, um, I do those visits, um. Um, with the Executive Director of Accommodation Services as well. And we will do those visits with an area manager who will, will host us. So since being in the role, I've probably visited all of the houses, I'm, I'm on my probably third round, um, at this stage.
All right, when did you first visit End Street?
Um, so End Street, um, as I think was, was mentioned on, on one of the days, there are actually three homes in a row, um, in End Street. Um, the first time I visited, and I, I'm, I might need to, um. Just, um, have a look at my statement, but the first time I visited was i- in, um, in twenty eighteen, but I only visited. Um, two End Streets, I didn't actually visit the, um, the residents that we're talking about today, so. Um, as part of my visits, I also do visits at night, so I had gone out on this particular visit. Um, with the night supervisor, um, and, and we went to number two End Street.
Just to pause, I'm sorry, I should have been clearer, uh, we're using End Street as a. Kind of a pseudonym to refer to the actual house in which Daniel lived, so when I'm, when I say End Street, I mean that house. If that's okay, and I accept it's a little bit confusing because it, it refers to a street.
Yeah.
Um, if I need to refer to the other houses, I'll.
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah.
Okay, so when did you first visit End Street?
So the first time I visited End Street was on the twenty fifth of February twenty nineteen.
Um, now, had there been issues with that house before you had visited?
I believe there were, I believe there were.
And had those issues been escalated to your level?
So can I explain to you why I say there, there were?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, please.
Um, so as, as you said, when I became Director of the, um, of, of the whole of Accommodation Services. Um, in twenty eighteen, um, I met with all my senior leaders, um, so at that time, obviously, as has been explained. There was a different structure in place, so there were about, um, uh, um, five. Um, five area managers plus two regional managers, um, that were reporting in to me. Um, shortly after I, um, I became Director, we had, um. The Ochtin Report that I'm sure everybody is familiar with that came out in, in South Australia. Um, I had taken that report and copied a copy for all of my senior leaders. Um, and asked them all to, to read it in the context of our service and then I, I met with each of them and I said to them. Is there, is, talk to me about what, what's in the report? And asked them if there were any areas across the service that had any sort of similar. Um, um, issues or that they were concerned about. That was probably in, um, October, November time. Um, and one of the area managers that I met with had mentioned, it had mentioned End Street. Um, to me as a site where, um, there were some significant issues. Um, and issues similar to, to what has been discussed today around, um, culture. Um, um, and, and general, um, cleanliness, et cetera. That, um, was, was one of the, one of the topics that I had discussed, so. I did become aware that that was a site that I should take a, take a closer look at. Um, and from that, um, I had been, um, talking and engaging with my, um, with, with our, um, Director of Audit. Um, and, and asked him, when he was putting his audit schedule together, um, if that was something that he could actually. If that was a house that he could prioritise in, in having a look at when the audit, audits were going through. I did talk to the, to the manager who was responsible for the site at the time, um, to get their viewpoint. Of how things were and if, if there was anything that, um, that they were aware of. Um, and, and certainly there was a, there was certainly a difference of opinion around, um, what the. Um, what one of the area managers who had been responsible for the site for a while, or for a long time, had, had told me. Versus what the, the, the local management was, was, that, what their view was, um, at the time.
All right, I, I'd like to explore that with you in a moment, but before I do, I think you might have heard, um, the evidence of Mr Cunningham before, or is that right?
Yes, I did.
And you, you heard Commissioner Bennett ask some questions around the air of neglect at End Street, did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
And. What was just, the matters that motivated you to ask for an audit of End Street? Consistent with a house that had that air of neglect, is that fair?
Sorry, I just lost your audio just at the end.
I'm sorry, is it fair that the, you were receiving reports of such an air of neglect about that house? And that was part of your motivation for asking for that review?
Not specifically in terms of, of the detail that, um, that, that was discussed with, um, with W E M. Um, but just a general feeling of, um. Uh, compatibility issues with the clients, um, staff culture issues, um. And, and just a general feeling that, that site, um, in particular, um, needed some attention.
Um, so. Okay, I will, will.
What led you specifically to form the view that there was an issue of compatibility of staff with residents? There was a possible problem with staff culture, um, and some other issues, what, what led you to that conclusion?
Yep, so when I had met with, um, one of the area managers, um, who was responsible for that site. After I had asked the, um, after I had asked the staff to read the Ochtin Report. Um, to give me their view around that and if there were areas within our service that, um, had. You know, that, that potentially we could, um, have, have issues that, that needed attention. So it was the area manager who, um, has since retired with us that had mentioned. And it was more compatibility around the, the clients living there.
What particularly did the area manager convey to you that, uh. Resulted in you forming a view that there was possibly something wrong that needed correction?
Um, so the area manager had, had been somebody who'd worked with us for many, many years, was very experienced. And had spent, um, a, a good part of the latter years of his career, um, um. Um, moving a number of people from the Strathmont Centre out into co- community living. And one of the things that he mentioned to me was, um, that often, you know, and how that process happened in, in the ti- you know, at the time. So often you had people who lived together in a, in a villa, um, that then would, would move out into, into a home together and. You know, often they were people who had similar disabilities. And, you know, often they were people who had similar disabilities, similar behaviour issues and things like that. And one of his concerns was that, you know, that's probably not the best thing to have people with similar disabilities and similar behaviour issues actually living in the same home. And so that was part of the discussion that we had had in terms of compatibility. So often we had people who, you know, potentially were, there might have been two people who were biters, if you like, who lived together or who had various behaviours of concern and things like that. And then also, we talked about general staff attitude because, you know, a number of the staff that we had working in the service were staff who had worked in an institutional model and then had transitioned into a community model, but not really made that transitional shift. So we had a number of conversations around that and how we needed to change culture and how we needed to change people's attitudes from, you know, a hotel model, if you like, but in an institutional model where everything was done at a particular time to a particular timetable and then versus what that looks like in a community house and what does community engagement look like? What does real, true engagement in the community look like as well? So we had a number of conversations around that and just staff attitude in general.
Look, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Ms Kirkby, but our transcript has stopped. So could we just check what the status of the transcript is so that we haven't lost any of your evidence? I apologise for interrupting.
Has our transcript recuperated?
We're getting it connected, but it's living recorded. So we're still have a transcript. It is still being recorded. We're just getting it reconnected with the writer.
I'm told Chair and Commissioners that the transcript is still being recorded, but the live transcript is not presently connected and will be reconnected. So I don't know whether we need the reconnection for those who are in the hearing room, who are following the live transcript. Or council, who are behind us.
Do we have an indication of how long it will take to re-establish the connection?
I believe we have it back, Chair. I can see my words appearing.
I'm told that we have it back, so we shall proceed on the assumption that it has recuperated and made a full recovery. I was going to ask you, Ms Kirkby, your answer, I wasn't clear whether your answer was directed to specific concerns about N Street or whether what had been conveyed to you by the experienced manager were general comments?
General comments, but enough to put it on my radar. I had come from having a small part of the portfolio in, as I said at the start, in Highgate Park and an aged care facility where everybody was grouped together and obviously, we went through a process with everyone to transition into the community in a particular way, taking on the wider portfolio.
Sorry to interrupt, but there must have been something, I assume, that caused you to connect the general comments made by the manager to the specific facility at N Street?
Yeah, so I had asked the question if there was any, if there was, of all of the managers, if there were any particular areas that they had concerns about. And that was one of the homes that that particular manager had suggested. And it was very general comments, but as I say, I was new into the position and needed to start my visits and to start looking at the service to get a sense of the service. So the best way that I felt I could get a sense of the service was to talk to the people who had been working in the service for a long time.
Okay, thank you. I think we'll get Ms Bennett back to us with...
Thank you. So you had some concerns in October of 2018 about N Street, is that fair?
Yeah, October, November, yes.
Yes. And around that time, you were monitoring risk man reports as they were coming through from all levels, is that right?
That's correct, yes.
And you saw some risk man reports come through about some bruising, some unexplained bruising?
Yes, I did, yes.
Can you tell us about that paragraph 77 of your statement? And did that cause you any concern that a house that had been flagged for you as a house of concern had unexplained bruising coming?
Yes, it did. And as I think was discussed with Wayne just previous around the notification around the bruising being insignificant. In other words, there were a number of bruises. There were certainly two risk mans that I was aware of that in that week preceding the 22nd of February and subsequently, the 25th of February, that were deemed on risk man to be small bruises. And I think one was described as being the size of a five cent piece, which suggested that it was a small bruise. And actually, I do recall reading both of the bruising reports on that week. One, when it was a small red mark, and then a couple of days later, when it appeared that it was the same bruise being reported again, but it had then progressed to a bruise. So I actually remember that rang a bell for me and I thought, well, that's good that reporting is happening, you know, in that sense. But as we now know, the reporting was completely inadequate for the size and the scale of what was happening with Daniel's bruising.
Yes, now you tell us that in your statement that staff are expected to report in accordance with the various risk man manuals. Do you recall giving that evidence?
Yes.
It's a paragraph 26. I think you say authorised and expected. They're not required to do that?
They are required, yes.
Okay. And you provide them with training about how to use that system?
So the risk man system is our previous system. It's not the system that we currently use. So the risk man system, I understand, was in place from about 2009, which predates my coming into the service, my understanding. So I can't tell you what training happened in 2009 onwards, but certainly, risk man training was something, was something at the time that there were a lot of manuals, if you like, in the homes as to how you report on risk man and how you record. And I think that a lot of the direction around how to use risk man was done at a local level. That's my understanding.
Can I just pause there? I just want to go slowly. I just want to be clear about my question. So you say in your statement they're authorised and expected, but you say now they were required and you require them to comply with the policies that you've listed at paragraph 26. Is that how I understand your evidence correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
All right. Now, you heard Mr Cunningham tell us that he never received formal training in those manuals. You heard that evidence?
I did.
Did you ever take any steps to know whether training was being provided in those manuals that staff were required to comply with?
I did, but the training that, so I did become aware that the risk man system was being used in a particular way. And it was clear that it was more of a reactive system than a proactive system. When I developed the new structure and we had a manager of quality and safeguarding in place, one of the first things that we actually did was really investigate what was happening with the risk man system, particularly around, we had hundreds of open risk man reports that actually... So a risk man report has a process to it where you've got the person who will log that risk man in the first place. Then there's a number of other people that may well be involved with the risk man around doing remedial actions. And then it is actually the expectation of the area manager to close those risk mans off. So when the manager of practice and quality was recruited, one of the things that we talked about was how many open risk man reports there were. And one of the questions that we both asked was, well, why are they open? And did people have training?
I'm just going to interrupt you for a moment, I'm sorry. I just want to return to my question. And my question really was just about the training. And the proposition I want to put to you is that it wasn't being provided by DHS in late 2018 and early 2019. Staff weren't being trained in risk man, is that fair?
So we, what I was, if I just finish that sentence, if that's okay? It's just, we took all of the area managers and the team leaders and we put them all through training on risk man. And that would have been, I would have to check dates, but it would have been towards the end of 20, no, it would have been, yeah, it would have been towards the end, the beginning, sorry, of 2019. In regards to our support staff, our support staff would have been given on-the-job training, really, around risk man reporting, is my understanding.
Okay. So fair to say there was no specific formal training for the support officers?
That I'm aware of, no.
No, and they were the ones who were responsible for the initial report that determined who saw that incident report, is that fair?
Yes.
Inaccurate reporting, sorry, just to pause here, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, you're fine, yeah.
So inaccurate reporting by the initial reporter can infect and affect the way that an incident is treated in the future, is that fair?
That is fair. My understanding is there are trigger words within the report that actually triggers an escalation as well. Now, I don't have those off, just off the top of my head.
All right. There's one. I wanted to just ask one question about the bundle B tab 87. Now, this is about risk man for managers. Now, at page 20 of that document, it seems to set out what the manager should be doing in response to a report that has been received in risk man. Hopefully, that document will become available any moment.
Just on page one.
Yes, so I think Mr Cunningham told us that this is the manager-level manual. So this is for the people at a level above the operator or the immediate reporter. I'm sorry, I said page 20, I think I meant page 10.
Sorry, I'm still on page one on the page, it's coming. Thank you.
Which page, which part of page 10 would you like expanded?
I just wanted to have a look at that table again to see if we had understood it correctly.
Well, it's a bit hard with the table in that form.
I'm hoping that the operator will do the thing that they did the last time and rotate it. I'm afraid I can't see it from where I am. Perhaps I can do it this way, Ms Kirkby?
I can see it if you...
Oh, thank you, thank you. I couldn't see it. Can you just tell me how does the person choose which category they are looking at? In an injury that might have other, an incident that might fit into multiple categories, which one predominates?
Within Accommodation Services, I would say almost always the client category would be used. Of health and safety for some issues, but to be honest, as I think Wayne might have mentioned, those, the other categories were hardly ever used by the staff who were reporting on risk man. The client category was the one that was picked almost every time, I would say.
And were supervisors expected to review risk man and would they amend it if they saw fit?
Yes, they could be.
Yes. And would they ever change any of the substantive details of the report that you're aware of?
The only details that would get changed would be if the report, quite honestly, didn't make sense. If there were issues of language, so if there were language barriers with the person making the report and the person receiving the report, sometimes one might read a risk man and try, it would be very difficult to follow what was actually going on. So often, a manager would go back to the staff member and talk to the staff member about what it was that they were trying to say and amend that or they may well put in a notation to the risk man.
All right, so there was no suggestion that statements would be removed prior to investigation or?
Oh, no.
They're kept there and they're added to, is that the way it's meant to work?
That's right, yes. And it is a fully auditable system. So if somebody did go in and interfere with the report in any way, that was on a, you know, on a timeline sort of tracked as to who...
That was, yes, so you can actually go back and see who's entered data at any given time?
That's right.
And are you aware that anyone does review if they find a problem in risk man reporting? Is there any process for checking if that problem is more widespread?
At the time, when we were using risk man, there were multiple, many, many, many risk man reports coming through in a day. The system was used more in a reactive way as opposed to really looking at trends that were happening in the service. So some managers might look at trends and certainly, we had the ability to look at trends, but the system wasn't necessarily used in that way. And as I said, this is our previous system.
All right. Now, I wanted to ask you if you ever met Daniel. Do you remember if you've ever met him?
Yes, I've met Daniel many times and actually was lucky enough to be at his 40th birthday that Karen spoke about earlier.
Yes. And what about Mitchell? Have you ever met Mitchell?
Yes, I've met Mitchell a few times as well.
Yes. And how do you feel your relationship is with the families of both Mitchell and Karen?
So I have met Karen many times through the unfortunate incidences that obviously we were talking about today. I also have worked with Karen in a professional capacity as well. Karen, as I think she mentioned, worked for Purple Orange and she was very heavily involved with the training of our Client Influencers Group that we set up a few years ago and was very involved in developing our client customer charter with the Client Influencers Group and myself. I have met Victoria and James once, just face to face, but I had spoken to James a number of times on the phone just over the years about various matters.
I want to return to that in a moment, but have you sought input into the policies that you list in your statement from the families of those who live with them? Live with those policies, that is.
Which policies?
But paragraph 49, you go through a lot of policies, but I'm particularly looking at paragraph 49. These are the policies that are said to operationalise your zero tolerance to abuse and neglected people with disability strategy?
Yep.
And there are 11 there. Are these the result of consultation with the families or with the people who receive services from DHS?
Zero tolerance to abuse and neglect, absolutely. So some of the first policies that are mentioned on point 49, managing incidents in the workplace and critical client incidents, et cetera, none of those ones are my policies, so they're the policies of the director of the IMU. So certainly, I was, families and the people we support were very involved with our zero tolerance to abuse and neglect and our quality practice and safeguarding framework. with our zero tolerance to abuse and neglect and our quality practice and safeguarding framework. So, our Client Influencers Group certainly have provided a lot of feedback around some of the things that they would like to see in the service and in our policies and in our practice moving forward.
And so, are you able to say whether the, any of the documents at 49 were the subject of consultation with families or they're just not owned by you?
I don't, I don't believe they were. Those policies, as I said, they're not owned by me, but I don't believe that critical incident policies or reporting policies have been, have had any family or client input at all. Customer feedback and complaints policy, again, we have had clients involved with those and feedback. Certainly, there has been feedback from clients in those policies.
And, all right, so you've received feedback about that, but you've perhaps not actively sorted, is that right?
No, we actively sorted.
Okay. In respect of all of them or just that one?
Customer feedback and complaints and zero tolerance to abuse and neglect, customer charter.
Okay. Is it important to you to be transparent in your investigations and the outcomes of investigations that concern people who receive services?
Absolutely, and certainly acknowledge that we need to do better.
What makes you say that briefly?
Well, I obviously watched Victoria and James's statement yesterday and it's absolutely, we absolutely need to do better and will do better in that space. And obviously, listening to Karen Rogers this morning, again, you know, we absolutely need to do better in our feedback and in our giving feedback to families. So, yeah, absolutely, we need to improve.
The letter that was received about Mitchell was pretty horrifying, wasn't it?
Oh, absolutely, heartbreaking, totally heartbreaking. And to listen to Victoria and James's pain yesterday was really, really hard to watch. And I don't think anybody would, would, you know, discount in any way the pain that receiving a letter like that would cause. And the not knowing, obviously, is, who would do such a thing is, it's completely heartbreaking to even think that anyone would write such a letter about anyone, particularly about a vulnerable person. I think the not knowing who did it, the thought as the Director of a service that there's potential that one of my staff could have written that, absolutely sends shivers down my spine. And, yeah, it's really, really awful.
Yes. You gave some evidence in your statement that you provided some counselling and support for the Rogers family. Did you provide the same offer to Mitchell's family, to Mitchell?
No, and it's no excuse to say that I wasn't the Director at the time, but it's certainly something that I will be reaching out to Mitchell's family and offering that, albeit, you know, that may well be, you know, too little, too late. But I absolutely want to work with Mitchell's family to ensure that they get the support that they, that they need and deserve.
Are you able to volunteer a view as to why there might have been differential treatment between those two cases? Why one was supported in that way and one was not? Or offered support in that way and the other was not?
Yeah, well, as I, as I said, I actually wasn't the Director of the entire Accommodation Services when the matter of the letter was, happened. But I was the Director of Accommodation Services when Daniel went through his bruising. And so, I walked right along the journey with Karen and Graham and Daniel, which is, which is quite different. As I say, I wasn't the actual Director responsible at the time of the letter. That was Claude Bruno, who was the, who was the Director of Accommodation Services at the time.
You were the Director whilst some investigations were being carried out, weren't you?
No. So, I was, I was the Director with the following on of the Ombudsman's recent report, but that was actually, yeah, it was some time before I became Director.
Yes, all right. And I think in your evidence, you said that you provided two to three counselling sessions for Karen and four for Daniel. And I think we heard from Karen this morning that there was slightly less than that accepted. Are we to understand your evidence to be that that number of sessions was offered, but only one was taken up?
Yes, and actually, I did speak to Karen, actually, today at the break. They were the sessions that I had, I had spoken to the various counsellors around providing in the first instance, obviously, the relationship with the councillor and the, and, you know, Karen and Graham and Daniel, I hadn't actually realised that they hadn't taken up all of the, all of the sessions, but they're, they're still available to them, as I said, to Karen.
Now, I'm going to just pass you a few issues that have arisen as I reviewed your materials. I'm going to do it at a reasonably quick pace, having regard to the time. So, I'm going to move around a little bit. But you tell us that the IMU would only investigate a matter after South Australian Police have concluded your investigation, does that remain your understanding of the situation?
That's my understanding, yes.
And are there any, any times that investigations will be appropriate before the South Australian Police have concluded their investigations?
Well, that would be a matter for the Director of the IMU to make that decision, I think. But I'm, I'm not aware of any, I'm not aware.
Okay. I wanted to take you back to your evidence before about certain trigger words that could trigger an escalation in risk man. Remember that evidence?
Yes.
Do you know where we would find information about those trigger words?
I could certainly provide that to the Commission afterwards.
All right. I also just wanted to understand about going back to tab 86. This is the risk man document again, at page seven. That document in bundle B tells, as I read it, under the heading- I'm not sure if that document is there now. Can you see the heading there, review the detail of the incident?
So, are we on page seven?
Yes, page seven, review the detail of the incident, do you see that? Could, perhaps the operator could-
I actually can't, I'm sorry.
Could be a logbook, please. Okay, which part of the page do you want?
The heading that says, review the detail of the incident?
Yes.
About halfway down the page?
Yes.
Now, this is, I understand, a direction to the manager to review the detail of the incident recorded in risk man. And I wanted to ask you about the second last bullet point where it says, remove any inappropriate statements or unfounded allegation as organisational policy may dictate. Now, what organisational policy is being referred to there?
I'm sorry, I'll have to take that on notice. I'm unaware of any organisational policy that would suggest to remove, remove any, any evidence from a, or any, any details from a, from a risk ban, other than what I said, if, if actually it didn't make any sense or something like that, that there would be a change. But again, you'd be able to see the history of that.
It says here that the person is directed to remove unfounded allegations and I don't quite understand how that removal could take place before an investigation.
Yeah, I agree, I'll need to take that one on notice if that's, if that's appropriate.
All right. That appears in two places in that document, just so that you're aware and your instructors are aware, that appears at page seven and it's repeated at page 20. And appears on its face to be a direction to remove allegations prior to investigation. I take it you can't take that any further for the Commission?
I can't, no.
I wanted to ask you briefly about the financial arrangements for people living in group homes. You heard some evidence that informal arrangements are quite common, did you hear that evidence?
I did.
So, as I understand it, adult clients with no guardianship orders in place, have their funds provided to, well, can you tell me, what are the processes in place for people with informal arrangements like Daniel?
I actually can't answer that question. Our finance, our finance area manages the finances with families and guardians?
Yes. Well, do you see any issues with an informal arrangement of that kind in place for Daniel? As an example?
Well, I think our, our financial arrangements or the finance division of the department is certainly a heavily regulated and audited part of government. So, yeah, I think they, they run to a, you know, a very, very high standard.
So, is there a, is there an appointed custodian or trustee for Daniel's money?
Well, Daniel was under the public trustee, I believe. And now Daniel's mum is his, is his financial manager.
And so, you say that he was subject to the public trustee, can you tell me what you mean by that?
I think his, his money, well, his money was, was, I think, managed by the client trust.
Yes.
Which is, which is administered within DHS. So, his money was managed in that way. But I don't actually know a lot of details about it, yeah.
As Kirkby, as I understand the evidence that's been given, apparently, these informal arrangements quite often involve cash being on the premises and dispersed by the staff as required. Is that your understanding?
So, different clients would receive amounts of money depending on what activities they were, they were taking part in. So, for instance, if somebody went out, you know, to-
I'm not, I'm not asking about the source of funds, I'm asking about what form the funds took when they were available at the home. Is it common practice for there to be a pool of cash?
There is, yes, it is common practice, so-
Isn't that, isn't that an invitation for misuse of money? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't the department have a policy of debit cards or even credit cards where there's a record of expenditure and the opportunities for misuse are minimal?
Yes, so debit cards are something that we have been trying to move to and we've been trying to have a more streamlined system of cash because the cash moving in homes, there is a lot of cash that gets moved and gets counted a lot of times in houses. We've got a lot of checks and balances in each house for the counting of cash and to make sure that the right cash balance is in place between shifts, which, as you can imagine, is taking time away from, from other things that staff would be doing that would be a lot more person centred and useful if we didn't actually have this cash within the homes. There's been a number-
I take it the answer to my question is, it would be a good idea?
Oh, it's a fantastic idea. There are a number of challenges with it, believe it or not, and some of, yeah, anyway. It's, it's, it's a really, it is something that we would love to do. And some clients, of course, do have debit cards, but in a vast majority of our clients don't.
Yes, well, cash is so yesterday, so I'm told.
I totally agree, though it's also balancing that with the number of our clients actually prefer to have cash for the bunnings, sausage and all of those sorts of things. But it is something that we have put a lot of time and effort into, actually, over the last, I think, about two years, but we still have not solved it.
Okay, we'll go back to Ms-
No, I'm sorry, well, I wanted to, I wanted to finish up by taking you to an email at HB, sorry, hearing bundle B tab 52. And this is an email that follows on from the bruising in February 2019. And you said here, there are so many things wrong with this. I would like you to follow up with a matter of urgency, please. And I want to just confirm with you that this was your impression at the time and these were your concerns about the house at the time. You said lack of reporting, and that was about the bruises that were being, that were not reported in a timely way, is that right?
That's correct.
And that was a concern for you?
Huge concern, huge concern.
And it was a concern that it can impact on the effectiveness of a subsequent investigation, is that right?
Well, it was more around the fact that we have, as you've been through with Wayne, we've, we've had a number of poor reporting practices on the week leading up to a family member receiving a phone call to get a locum to come and have a look at her son on a Friday night. With, you know, then, you know, in terms of the notification of me actually being notified of that bruising and the severity of that bruising, I actually wasn't noticed until the Monday, notified until the Monday, and I was notified by Karen, which is absolutely not appropriate. So, therefore, you know, there was, there was a lot of time went by there. And as, as you say, absolutely, it affected the investigation and it also affected our transparency and trust and all of those sorts of things with the family. So, you know, when, when Karen rang me and sent me the photographs of the bruising, again, I was completely horrified that I was hearing this from a mum as opposed to internally.
You say the staff apparently sleeping on duty, according to the mum, staff apparently being lazy and this is known. Were those some of the cultural problems you'd been informed about? Or were these matters that were raised after?
Look, they were, they were alluded to previously, but, you know, you look for evidence for some of these things. Now, obviously, I had started, you know, I had started looking at some of these things, but hadn't specifically been to N Street to look at these things. But on the Monday when I, when I met Karen and Graham and Daniel at N Street with the other managers, these were certainly some of the things that I saw, which absolutely horrified me. So, when you asked the question, well, I think it was your colleague asked the question around, well, is nobody seeing, like, when you open the front door, oh, sorry, when you open the front door and you're met with a smell of urine, does nobody ask a question about that? So, what does that say about what's going on in that house?
When you say there, staff apparently being lazy and this is known, what do you mean by that? This is known by who, senior staff?
So, when I had spoken to Karen, so I'd had, you know, a huge conversation with Karen and Graham on that Monday in Daniel's bedroom, and it was like Karen's floodgates opened with a number of things that she had concerns about over the years that I was unaware of. And I think Karen has put it in her, I think, I think I heard her mention it in her own statement around choosing our battles and Karen said to me, I choose my battles. And again, that's something else that, as a Director of the Service, I don't want to hear that families are feeling they need to choose their battles and why is that? And what does that say about our culture and what do we need to do about it? So, Karen had said to me that she had raised some of these matters around, you know, the staff are lazy, you know, she had come to visit, I mean, she visited quite a lot, but, you know, she, she visited and, you know, she felt that staff member had opened the door and it appeared that they may have been sleeping. And some of those other, other issues that Karen raised today around the quality of Daniel's clothes and, yeah.
And you attended the house that day and you observed the house to be dirty, is that right?
Absolutely, yeah, it was disheartening.
And was Commissioner Bennett's characterisation that it had an air of neglect a fair character? And was Commissioner Bennett's characterisation, that it had an air of neglect, a fair characterisation for you that day?
Absolutely.
Yes. And is it acceptable that a house that is the home of these people was presented in that way?
Absolutely not. Absolutely not.
Commissioners, those are the matters I seek to explore with Ms Kirkby this afternoon. I'll hand back to the chair.
Thank you very much, Ms Kirkby. I'll just ascertain from my colleagues whether they wish to ask questions. Commissioner Bennett, do you have a question of Ms Kirkby?
Thank you. I want to talk a little bit about, in your submission from paragraphs 35 to 46, you talk about the zero tolerance strategy. And this goes to the culture of organisations. What do you actually do with staff so that in paragraph 37, that they actually understand, recognise and name all forms of abuse and neglect? We just talked about the smell, the filth. How are staff trained that they see those signs, let alone the more extreme signs of physical abuse that have been referred to? And it goes to writing letters of name-calling and threats. What actually happens in the, I understand, two weeks of intense training?
I think there are perhaps a number of questions there. So let's start with the one that how do you ensure that staff understand, recognise and name all forms of abuse and neglect? I think that was the first question.
Yes, so it's an excellent question. And I think, well, one of the main things that I do is the first person that they meet when they come to their induction is actually myself and the executive director of Accommodation Services. So certainly, we actually talk... I actually talk to people to try and engage hearts and minds and make documents into living things. So, you know, I think it's really important to really engage with new staff and existing staff, but I'll talk about existing staff in a second, if that's okay. But certainly, all new staff that come into the service, I talk to them about zero tolerance to abuse and neglect, and I talk to them about what that is. And I will often start by saying, when we talk about abuse and neglect, we all think, well, that's not me. Because we go to those big-ticket items, as I call it. We go to sexual abuse, physical abuse, financial abuse, and we forget about the... You normally don't start there. That's not where abuse starts. Abuse starts, I think, when you open the front door and you smell urine meeting you. Or you... Some of the work that we've done with the Client Influencers Group, one of the things that they are very, very passionate about is that they are presented to the world in the best way possible. And that includes having clean breath, you know, having their teeth brushed, having their hairs brushed, actually looking nice and being presented how they want to present to the community. So I talk to all the things that...
I'm sorry to interrupt, Ms Kirkby, but is the answer to Commissioner Bennett's question that the way staff come to understand, recognise and name all forms of abuse and neglect is because you talk to them at their induction and convey that information to them? Is that what you're telling us?
Well, I guess it's probably not as simple as that, yes, but it's, I mean, that's one aspect of it. I think it's about seeing yourself in the client and it's about seeing what would you want if you were in the service? What would you want? How would you want your loved one to be presented? And how would you want your loved one to be cared for in the service? So it's about making the policies real, I think, to people.
Does your training invite people with disability and their family and carers to come and tell your staff about how they perceive what could be abuse and neglect and what their aspirations are and how they want to live? Is it included that you have a voice, a first-hand account of those expectations?
So at this moment in time, we've got a limited connection into our inductions with the people with lived experience. However, that is in our plan to have everything about you with you, to have our clients and our families involved in everything from recruitment through to training and expectations. That is our longer-term strategy as we work through. We've got a number of things that we need to develop, and that's certainly high up on our agenda.
And last question, Chair, since he's guiding me on how to ask questions. One of your commitments is capacity building.
Yes.
How are you training staff to actually work directly with clients and families, coordinating, facilitating supports and services, growing supports and networks? Are they being trained and understand what that means for the client?
Yes, absolutely. So we have eight roles currently that are actively working across the seven areas. And they are working with the clients, their families. They're working with the staff within each house in developing capacity and accessing other supports for clients as well. So external advocacy, external community engagement. So it's definitely, capacity building is absolutely a growing...
And those networks are mainstream parts of our community?
Absolutely, yes. It's about being an equal citizen. It's about, you know... I talked very, very briefly, I might have mentioned, the reconnecting to community, moving people out of Highgate Park, the last remaining institution. One of the things that we did was we worked very closely with individuals moving into their new communities to make sure that their likes were taken into consideration, whether it was, you know, linking in with the local libraries, the local community centres, the local activities councils, that people are fully engaged in their communities and that they have their supports around them in mainstream. Absolutely.
Last question. And are you monitoring to see if that practice, training aim is actually working? And are you going to be able to report on the success of these initiatives? And when would that be?
Yeah, absolutely. So what we've done with the new structure is that we have these roles within the service, working within the service, but reporting out to a manager that isn't within that line, if that makes sense. So therefore, those people are actually, the staff are reporting against specific KPIs and we're able to monitor. We have also been surveying our clients as well. So client satisfaction survey, how are you going? What's working well for you? What's not? Would you like to see more of all of those sorts of things? So we've just done our second client survey recently, and the results of that are just in the process of being collated.
And that'll be shared with the NDIA?
It certainly can be, yeah.
Commissioner McEwan, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, one question, Ms Kirkby. You said that you have 211 houses under your auspice, and you try and visit, one day a month you set aside to visit houses so that you can see for yourself, as you described with N Street.
Yep.
How many houses would you visit in one day?
Well, it just depends on the clustering. So I should say 211 sites. So some of our... So if I went to Mount Gambier as an example, there are eight homes there, so I would visit all homes on the one day. Same for Cadena. And then, like I say, on average, one day a month, I might visit more homes, depending on what's going on.
Okay, so taking Mount Gambier, you've described eight houses in one day. So how much time actually in one house would that be? That would be less than one hour, can I suggest?
Well, again, it depends. So, you know, if I'm in Mount Gambier, it might be an overnight. I might go and share a meal with them. There's one particular lady that likes to do that when I visit. I might go to a basketball game, which I have done in the past with a number of people who play. Or it might be some people just want to see you for, you know, a shorter period of time.
All right, I'll get specifically to the point. Okay, you go into a house. It would take more than an hour, it would take days to get a sense of the culture. I'll put it to you, it would take days to get a real sense of the culture or what's happening in that house. So how could you, I'll put it to you, wouldn't it be adequate for you to get a real sense of, for example, you were shocked to discover the state of N Street? So how can you do that to the all 211 houses in the time you have?
Yeah, so I guess I respectfully answer that question, that if I go back to the experience of N Street, I knew there was a problem with N Street when the front door was open, when you get that smell of urine, when you walk through the house and see some of the things that I saw. I guess I've been working in the disability sector now for 30 years, and I've worked in lots of different aspects and configurations of models. And I think you do get a sense when you walk through and also when you meet with the people in the homes, looking at their appearance, taking on board some of those things that were brought out in terms of Daniel's statement. How, you know, are people clean? How is their oral hygiene? How is their clothes? Are they happy? I agree that it is a short period of time for me as director in that space, but also I'm just one person who's visiting as well. Our area managers have an actual KPI around visiting all of their homes for a longer period of time on a three-monthly basis, and team leaders visit the homes on a monthly basis, and that's their expectation. And they would be there for longer periods of time.
All right, I might just interrupt now. I'll conclude. Sorry, Chair, I just didn't conclude.
Commissioner McEwan, it was one question. I see the time and I understand there's an application.
All right, with all due respect, I'll just conclude by putting it to Ms Kirkby. In the time you have, it's unreasonable, isn't it, to 211 houses to get a real deep sense of the culture? You just described N Street as one example. I put it to you, it's unreasonable to be able to achieve that in your capacity.
Well, I certainly do. I mean, visits are one thing, but also it's about looking at what are some of the trends and incidents? So I might spend a longer period of time at a house where there may be a number of incidents for that particular house. To get a sense, I may go back and visit again. I may ask the area manager to do some follow-up work. But I think it's very important for all of our layers of management to actually go and visit and meet with the clients and actually start to build that, to build that relationship with the people we support. But I absolutely take your point.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Ms Bennett. I think you've finished your examination of Ms Kirkby. Ms Eastman, I understand there may be an application. Can you help me as to how we can deal with it?
The other parties with leave don't require any questions of Ms Kirkby. Mr O'Brien, who acts for Victoria and James, wants to make an application to ask some questions.
Yes, do you have a view about this?
It would be my view, given Ms Kirkby's evidence this afternoon about the nature and the extent of the interaction that she had with Victoria and James, and in light of some evidence in Victoria's written statement, but not addressed orally, that the matters that Mr O'Brien wishes to address may have little utility to the overall inquiry for this particular case study. But it is Mr O'Brien's application, and he may explain the relevance of these questions to the evidence.
Yes, thank you. Mr O'Brien, you've heard what Ms Eastman has to say. What are... How do the questions you propose to put advance the position of the commission on the issues that have been identified?
There are two topics about which I'd seek on instructions to ask this witness about. They are the appointment of the person who was the catalyst, really, for the bringing about of the writing of the letter which was sent to Victoria and James on the 3rd of March 2018, the reappointment of her into a line of responsibility by this witness. And secondly...
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand.
So the person who, the author of the letter that has become exhibited in these proceedings at 14.1
Didn't identify at all.
Referred to the forced movement or removal of a manager from the residence as being the catalyst for the letter, the catalyst, therefore, for the threats. That person left but was then reinstated in a position which had a line of authority to the residents later on and under the directorship of this witness, as I understand it. That's certainly the evidence of Victoria and James.
And the second point?
The second point is the response by the department after the draft ombudsman's report was made available.
Yes, I don't think you should be permitted to ask the second. That raises a whole range of issues that have already been explored and no doubt will be explored by council assisting further. And if there are issues you want to raise, want council assisting to raise, I suggest that overnight you talk with her, and she can then determine what is appropriate. If you want to ask Ms Kirkby about the first matter, then please ask some rather specific questions about that, and we'll see how we go. But I don't anticipate this will take very long.
Chair, before that occurs, could I just draw Mr O'Brien's attention to paragraph 90 of Victoria's statement?
Yes.
I ask that Ms Kirkby's attention also be drawn to that paragraph.
Can that be brought up on the screen, please? The reference is 0361, 001, 0017. And then the following page. Mr O'Brien, you've seen that paragraph?
Yes, I have.
We're still waiting for it to come up, I think. I think, Chair. Could we enlarge, please, paragraph 90? So that Ms Kirkby can see it. Thank you. Can you see that, Ms Kirkby?
Yes, I can.
Yes, Mr O'Brien, ask your well-honed question.
Thanks, Chair. So you can see from paragraph 90, and that's a Victoria's statement, that Lesley had been removed from the residence but was in the position for a short time whilst the existing manager was on leave. You see that?
I do.
And that was brought to your attention, was it not?
It was.
And Wendy was then removed from the position? Is that so?
No. Unfortunately, the residence that Mitchell lives in and the area that the staff member in question and what this email was advising... So what this email was about briefly was about where... It was about the new areas, and it was about what area manager was in what area and what team leader was in what area. Now, the mistake, if you like, that was made here is the area that Mitchell lives in and his house are referred to as the same thing. So the staff member in question here never had direct reporting lines for Mitchell's house. There were alternative arrangements made for that house. She has never had anything to do with Mitchell's house following, obviously, the events that were discussed. But is working in the area of the same name, if that makes sense?
Certainly. Just going back one step to paragraph 89, you'll see from that paragraph that there was a time when Lesley, the former Accommodation Services manager, was acting in Wendy, the incumbent's, role for a month. You see that?
Yes.
And that was brought to your attention? And she was removed, correct?
Again, yes, Lesley was working in Wendy's position, but alternative arrangements had been made for the oversight of the house and the area that Mitchell lived in. and the area that Mitchell lived in.
You can obviously see Victoria and James' concern as to the, the position being filled by Lesley. You, you understand that, don't you?
I absolutely understand the concern. And when I spoke to, um, when I spoke to [BLEEP], clarified that, that there was no oversight for Mitchell's, um, service by Lesley.
And going back then to paragraph ninety, you can see that when they received that generic email associated with the name of the residence or the name of the place, however it was explained, that, that would have caused a great deal of concern and, and indeed re-traumatise them as to the, to the, the existence of that letter and the contents thereof, correct?
Yeah, absolutely. And I apologised at the time [BLEEP] for that confusion. The, um, the, um, the, the correspondence, um, was not designed to cause any trauma to, to any family. I absolutely appreciate that it did and I apologise then and I apologise again today. Um.
Indeed, you, you've, you've come to learn that, that the, the family, in particular Victoria and James, uh, requested ministerial assistance in relation to this, this particular email and, and what it meant in terms of, particularly the safety for Mitchell, correct?
Yes, absolutely. Yep.
I want to ask you about something you said in answer to Miss Bennet.
So, Miss, uh, have we not exhausted the topic, Mr O'Brien?
Look, this just, this arises from the evidence that she, that this witness gave to Miss Bennett and is relevant to this topic.
One, one more question, I think.
Thank you. You said at, at page one seventy-eight of the transcript, when you were asked this question, the question was, you were the director whilst some investigations were being carried out, weren't you? And that was a question in relation to the investigations of the letter. Do you remember being asked that?
Yes, I do.
You responded, no, I was the director with following on from the ombudsman's recent report. But that was actually, yes, it was some time before I became director. You remember answering that?
Um, yes.
Well, you were the director from the sixth of August, two thousand and eighteen, were you not?
Uh, yes, I was.
And the letter was, the letter was sent and received, or at least received on the third of March, two thousand and eighteen, was it not?
If, if that's what you're saying, yes.
So you were the director whilst some of the investigations were being carried out. In fact, most of the investigation was carried out under your directorship, correct?
Um, I think the majority of, I mean, I would have to check records, but I would say that the majority of the investigation would have happened before August.
That's, that's my impression.
Thank you, Mr O'Brien. Uh, Miss Eastman, do we now adjourn until ten AM tomorrow, Adelaide time?
Uh, yes, with one matter, you might recall in my opening, I made reference to section six, capital M, of the Royal Commission's Act. And that is a provision dealing with injuries to a witness. And it extends to any person who causes any damage, loss or disadvantage to any person on account of the person having produced a document or given information or a statement to the Royal Commission. The Royal Commissioners take these provisions very seriously. And can I remind people following the, uh, conduct of this Royal Commission, either in the hearing room or making comment online, to be reminded about the effect of section six M.
Thank you very much. Uh, Miss Kirkby, thank you for coming to the Royal Commission and giving evidence. We appreciate, uh, your attendance. I'm sorry to have kept you a little longer than perhaps we anticipated. But, uh, thank you for your assistance. We'll adjourn now until ten AM Adelaide time tomorrow.
The Royal Commission is adjourned.